All right, I'm going to go ahead and call the council meeting for September 14th. It's 11:30. We're here at the Murfreesboro Airport. If you will, if you'll bow your heads, and we'll say a prayer and do our pledge. Father, I thank you for this chance to be here. Lord, for the passion that's in this room for Murfreesboro. Lord, that you give us the ability to make decisions that would be fitting to the residents of Murfreesboro and to make Murfreesboro a better place. Lord, I thank you for those prayers that are spoken and unspoken things. Lord, for those that have absolute praise reports and those, Father, that are looking for those. Lord, give us the guidance to make the decisions today to the best of our ability. We ask all these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Members, if y'all are okay, I know there's a lot of people here that want to hear the project document proposal. Aaron, no offense to you, but I don't think people are here to listen to your July dashboard.
I am. I am, Aaron. Just looking for the record.
But what I'd like to ask, if there's no objection, is that we move item five to the top of the agenda. And then I think what would also be beneficial, the state law says that, so we need to suspend the rules. The state law says that we can allow public comment for actionable items on the agenda. This item is, this, what we're discussing is not really an actionable item. So what I'd like to do is to have the public comment after the proposal, so that way everyone can hear what the proposal is. And then we'll have, we have a list of seven people who'd like to speak. So does anyone have any objection to that?
I fully support that.
Okay. All right. So here's what we'll do. We're going to have project, the item number five proposal come first. And then after item five, for those that are here, we'll go into what the, how the public comment works. And then the seven people who are signed up to speak after the proposal, if that works okay. All right, Mr. Tyndall.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So we're going to present the item today that is a proposal to bring professional baseball to the city of Murfreesboro, which will assist the city in a lot of different aspects of what we'd like to do and what we plan to do for a long period of time. I'm not going to take a lot of time in preliminary remarks because I'm going to ask the Jason Rose, who is the managing partner of the ownership team that has brought our proposal forward, and Mr. Josh Schwab, who is the commissioner of the American Association to speak. They have a presentation, I think it would be very instrumental in helping council go forward. I think it's important to emphasize that this is the beginning point. Right now, we're at the conceptual stage. So it's been proposed to the city. Staff will spend some time and resources as we go through and evaluate. And because of that, we want to make sure the council's read in at the very beginning. So there is no agreements. We will ask council to give instructions and move forward on a memorandum of understanding, which is important to get us to kick things off. But we have a lot, we have a long way to go. And I think, you know, Mayor, you'll have more remarks along those lines. We have a long way to go before we actually are at a point where council's making decisions. But we want to get council's acquiescence that we're going to move forward and spend some time on the project. With that, if I could, I'll introduce Jason Rose and let him start his presentation. Jason, go ahead. A little bit of your background and then into your presentation would be great.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you for the opportunity to be here. My name's Jason Rose. I hail from Scottsdale, Arizona. And I am the managing partner of Invest Murfreesboro LLC, which is seeking, exploring to do some potentially exciting things in the community. Over the past week, those things maybe got a little too exciting. So I'd like to say to my friends in the audience, Ginger and Barbara, and Lisa and Cindy Watts, Bill, and others, thank you for the conversation. Thank you for the collaboration. And I hope you enjoy what is shared today because it was quite a few days with you. So thank you for it. I want to start with the elephant in the room. I think the presentation's a little mixed up, but I addressed Lisa and those who feel so passionately about Cannonsburg. Because I was a little apprehensive about coming into town, to be honest with you, when I saw what was happening on social media. On Monday, I reached out to the folks and said, I think we're on the same team. I think there is a marvelous opportunity because when I first started exploring this, the goal was not to build any minor league baseball stadium. The goal was not to build any minor league baseball stadium. It was to do something of architectural significance that was uniquely Murfreesboro. I didn't know what that was going to be until I discovered the passion online. I had visited Cannonsburg in June, and I'll talk about that in a second. But when I went there a second time, it clicked. Combining an athletic campus with such an important site of cultural heritage could make this one of one in the United States. I don't think it's been done before. I'll let the commissioner speak to that. Maybe it has. But to me, that was the opportunity. So being a part of taking visitation at Cannonsburg from eight or 10 or 14,000 to 250,000 struck me as a pretty special opportunity that's been the source of a lot of conversation over the past few days. Just need to click forward here. I will tell you that this is not new to me. In Arizona, I've been involved in many historic preservation issues. One in particular involved the nation's largest home builder. And they took away one of my all-time favorite bars called Greasewood Flats. And I was involved in that to try to move Greasewood Flats, make it better. The family needed to sell for a lot of different reasons. But to be honest with you, the home builder didn't do what they said they were going to do. And I resigned from the account. And I told the people that are here for Cannonsburg, I told the council, our ownership group is not going to be a part of anything that does anything but enhance Cannonsburg and complement it, period. Period. Maybe some other group wants to come in and anchor the us. If this project moves forward with the direction of council, we would seek to more formally work with a group of, from Cannonsburg, a friends of Cannonsburg, whatever the citizens think makes the most sense, to aid the potential design of the stadium. To aid the potential design of the stadium. There are a few sites that are possible in the downtown area. And I'm going to speak to why the downtown area is particularly interesting to our group. Two of those potential sites don't impact Cannonsburg at all. One would potentially be designed with it for this unique campus that we're talking about. And all the efforts with the leaders of the Save Cannonsburg group resulted in something I never was expecting when I was coming to Murfreesboro, but signing a petition on Monday afternoon, signing their petition, because I thought it was very important to send a message that this is not us versus them. This is the same team. Baseball is about joy. Baseball is about family. Baseball, as the county mayor told me, is potentially about fellowship. And that's what the process needs to be, and hopefully can be. How did we get here? A lot of people ask that. Well, I got to know a couple of owners in the league. And they started saying, man, you're really passionate about baseball. Have you thought about being an owner in the American Association with us? I said, no, but I'd like to pursue that. They introduced me to the commissioner, Josh Schwab, who's going to be speaking here after me. And he provided a list of cities around America that he thought would be tremendous for the league and what its goals were. And to be honest with you, I was focusing on some other cities early on. New Orleans in particular seemed kind of exciting. But the commissioner kept saying, Murfreesboro, Murfreesboro, Murfreesboro. And by chance, I had scheduled a trip with my family to come to the area. And I reached out to the city cold. I called them. And I said, hey, would you be interested in having this conversation? And the answer was, yes, we'd be happy to have. The staff said, we'd be happy to have the conversation. So we did. And so I drove over and toured a variety of different sites. That's when I first saw Cannonsburg. And I said, this really could be, this really could be special. And for a guy that has visited every major league baseball stadium, and has visited several of the stadiums of the American Association of professional baseball, I started thinking, you know, this, this could have potential. Let's spend some time on it. I understand Murfreesboro has created some great major league baseball players. Sonny Gray, David Price. I was not one of them. But this is me in 1995 with less of a mullet. And that was winning the Wiffleball World Series and defeating a future All-Star in Paul LaDuca in that championship game. And it's something that my kids have adopted, too. They have created a national tournament with Wiffleball that takes place in Scottsdale Stadium. And they'll be traveling in a few weeks to participate in the national championships in York, Pennsylvania, at a very good minor league baseball stadium there. The opportunity and the vision. We already talked about the architectural significance. I, for one, don't want to be a part of anything that's a vanilla stadium. And I think what, where I learned that was in my neighborhood in Scottsdale, there is a downtown baseball stadium I consider the finest spring training stadium in the nation. It's a little Fenway Park. It has no parking. And it lights up downtown as the spring training home of the San Francisco Giants. Every spring, I see those orange and black t-shirts walking by my office. And I know what good is happening just up the road from my office. And that really has influenced when I came to the bottoms, when I came to the downtown area and I saw the courthouse, it just reminded me of home and what is possible here. And now that the Cannonsburg conversation is so forefront, it just reinforces even more what can be done to do something charming, romantic, special, different, uniquely Murfreesboro, and uniquely this kind of stadium. What is our group, who is our group and what is it going to be? Because it's clear by now, I hail from a different part of the country. But the group that is forming will be one of national resource, including owners of other baseball teams, other basketball teams. Because if you're going to have an ownership group here, you want it to be structured to win and to achieve the objectives that may be spelled out in the future to execute well for this community. I myself have done work for a lot of significant events. They have been my day job, my clients, hockey franchises, the biggest car auctions in the world, NASCAR tracks. So I heard the commissioner talk earlier today in meetings about the various elements of ownership and what's important. And I appreciated his comments about myself and in terms of some of the things that we own already, including the largest polo event in the United States that we created from zero. And we understand the rhythm of ticketed events. We understand what it takes to be, have a successful franchise. We understand what it would take to be, go beyond baseball and to have services and festivals and all kinds of different events in a stadium that would help animate a downtown. To show an example of the level that we're trying to reach, I mentioned the ownership group. I failed to say that we are, we are talking with local individuals because they will ultimately be the face of the franchise. Again, not this mullet. We want local people who are invested here, who have lived here, to step up and be a part of this team. And that will be an ongoing process. But one, one group in particular is, is very exciting. NASCAR fans may know this name, two-time Daytona 500 champion, who's expressed interest in both investing in the team as well as bringing his brewery and restaurant concept to the project if it makes sense for the city and for the project. And that's Michael Waltrip. Our team is also surrounded by best-in-class attorneys, developers, and consultants who will do this project correctly and right. That's the ownership group. Ultimately, it will be a general manager, scouts, and an organization that is put together that you will see a lot of in Murphy, that you would see a lot of in Murfreesboro, that will run the baseball operations. Will not necessarily be the people that are day-to-day operators. It will be others that'll do that. And that infrastructure and those positions will be established over time. As I mentioned, more than baseball, the commissioner is going to speak to this and what other stadiums in the league do. But the season lasts about 50 games, home games. And that leaves another 300 days to animate the stadium and activate the downtown with exciting other events. If we go down a path and we work with the citizens and the council on something that combines, that brings together the campuses of Cannonsburg and a baseball stadium, they may work together. There's all kinds of possibilities of what can happen. And I think it's just a beautiful process before us of how we can enrich Cannonsburg, how we might be able to design this stadium in a way that work, that is the best of all worlds, and again, creates an athletic and a cultural campus. I heard something this morning from one of my new friends. And she said she always hates to choose between chocolate and vanilla ice cream. And that's why Swirl was created. And that might be a good example for us today of how can we create a really good tasting cone of swirl ice cream. I have frequently mentioned already the outstanding engagement with the public. I would also like to compliment our interactions, as limited as they have been with the city. They have been professional. They have been candid. And that is the best way to get to a good place. So as someone who's done a lot of work with governments throughout his career, our experience thus far with the community and the council has been, and the, and the staff has been exceptional. One of the most frequently asked questions of the past few days has been, if this proceeds, what would you name the team? I had some really good suggestions. Had the Pioneers, had the Cannons, had the Bucketheads. I mean, I even understand. Two of those are tips of the cap to Cannonsburg. And I even heard a funny one this morning about mullet heads. So I didn't take that personally. I thought it was very funny. But if I ever look at a hockey franchise, it might be a little more appropriate. But the idea here would be to ultimately engage the community in a naming contest. Hey, what do you think it should be? And then narrow those choices down over time and make this a Murfreesboro experience rather than just pick a name out of the blue. I'm now going to welcome Commissioner Josh Schwab to the podium. But if all goes well, the goal would be, and he can articulate this a little more, the goal would be to have opening day in spring of '26. Lot of work, as the city manager was mentioning, between now and then. However, what an exciting opportunity we have before us. And we would love to continue the process and see what's possible, knowing that the citizens, the council, the staff, or our franchise at the end of the day may say no. But it's exciting to possibly explore getting to yes. Thank you for your consideration and for listening today.
Before we begin, I'll just start by saying thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council, constituents. It's always good for the commissioner to show up before a game start because once they start, and the only thing everybody wants to talk about is the umpire performance. So it's good to be here prior to that happening, just to talk about baseball. And maybe someday we get to talk about umpires. But today, the good stuff. This is, thank you. Thank you. By way of background, Josh Schwab, I'm a recovering attorney, former commissioner of professional soccer league, also a professor of law at the University of Wisconsin Law School and some law schools previous to that. I'm also involved in professional hockey. Been the commissioner of the American Association since 2019. This is my fifth season. I'll be awarding my fifth championship trophy next week before our league participates in international play for the first time in professional baseball history. So it's very exciting times in the American Association and very exciting times being here today with you in Murfreesboro to discuss it. First off, by way of background, for those that know a lot about professional baseball, take what you know and throw it in the trash can. Because in the last three years, Major League Baseball has completely disrupted the industry. We used to have two segments. We had a segment of affiliated baseball, which is your traditional triple A down to single A. And then we had the independent leagues. In 2019, Commissioner Manfred sent me a message saying he'd like to meet in San Diego at MLB winter meetings. The purpose of that meeting was to institute one baseball. One baseball was his theory to bring all of professional baseball under the umbrella and auspice of MLB. Included in that is the international league. So we can start working together to grow the game. No longer do we compete with the triple A teams, double A teams, single A teams. We're in fact invited to winter meetings. We'll have the best practices sessions and do exactly what they do and look what they look like. This is our, and more on that later, this is the American Association, our member teams. We spread all the way from Winnipeg down to Dallas, Texas, and that metroplex, as far west as Lincoln, Nebraska, as far east as Gary, Indiana. And we obviously are looking to expand. A little more on the MLB partnership. As I stated, that division between affiliated baseball and what was then known as independent league baseball has completely melted away. We attend the same meetings they do. You'll see if we're fortunate enough to bring baseball to Murfreesboro, the same programs of Copa, Marvel, those huge promotions you see around minor league baseball. We're also included MLB Network Media. We attend the same conferences to attract employees. We have the same youth program and you'll see at the ballpark, bringing in youth from Murfreesboro and the surrounding areas to teach them the game, grow the game of baseball. The community ally program, which is actually our relationships with MLB teams. So an MLB team could adopt Murfreesboro as a partner league team that they would cross-market with. Lastly, and point eight is important, both for city council and the constituents to know, as you read about some of the tumult that's occurred with Major League Baseball, minor league baseball in the past, we are not underneath that particular auspice. So for example, when you read about Major League Baseball mandating certain improvements to stadiums, they don't have that power over us and they never will. We, as a group, as a joint venture, decide our minimum standards. So just know, there's not some third party dictating what happens with your stadium in Murfreesboro. It's your partner, the LSC and the city that determines what's in Murfreesboro's at best interest. And I'll also address the elephant in the room that Jason first started with in terms of the village. I was fortunate enough to also tour Cannonsburg Village this morning. I will tell you that we have other stadiums that are similarly positioned with historical features of particular cities. Most notably, Sioux Falls, South Dakota is looking at building a downtown stadium as well, for the same reasons you may be looking at it. And they have some hot springs or some baths that are associated on the downtown site. We see those baths and those hot springs similar to Cannonsburg Village in that we can amplify them. We can get more people there and find more funding for that particular historical site. So another example would be Sioux City actually built a plaza outside their stadium for people to meet prior to games. And we see Cannonsburg Village very similarly. So we by no means, or stretch of the imagination, want to disrupt Cannonsburg, but instead to amplify it. Because we do think it's valuable to our stadiums to not be about baseball, but to be cultural platforms. And by way of that, I mean, we use our stadium to amplify the culture. Here in Murfreesboro, it could be your food. It could be your music. Some features that we want to show to the world are brought to our cultural platforms, also known as stadiums. So I just want to address that also at the outset. This is our particular map. Some may know that we also have a project that has gone public in Clarksville. And our goal would be to bring Clarksville and Murfreesboro to public and have the same opening pitch on the same season to create a natural rivalry. So it's an exciting time potentially here in Murfreesboro, but also to the, to the other city in Clarksville nearby. A little bit more about the American Association, just the volume and the quality of talent we have. We draw 1.7 million fans. And it's going up and to the right, meaning we're drawing more and more post-COVID. Another thing that is not written here, but pitch clocks have been revolutionary to baseball. And for those that oppose pitch clocks, just know, it's not changing the game. It's actually returning the game what it used to be and be the game you grew up loving. So pitch clocks, we believe, will transform the modern game of baseball to be more marketable to families who can't sit around three, three and a half hours, four hours, waiting for games to end. Now our games finish in 2:43, and they're very predictable. Two and a half to 2:50, could be a 12 to 10 ballgame or two to three ballgame. We know that's kind of the timeframe where they're going to end. So our attendance has been very strong and continues to grow. You see, we lead all MLB partner leagues in attendance. And it appears that we are going to surpass much of affiliated baseball in terms of average attendance the next three years, according to forecasts. Other stadiums, if you want to look at comparisons of other cities, we've built four stadiums in the last six years. Depot, Routine Field, Impact Field, and Wisconsin Brewing, all built pre-COVID. It's important to note that as we look at price tags of stadiums, understanding that, like everything else, costs have gone up. So as you research this, understand that that was our world. The world's changed a little bit. But you also don't want to wait to build a stadium. Cities have asked, well, what if we wait five years? It's only going to get more expensive. Steel prices, construction costs in general, they're expensive. We look back at the older stadiums, which we have, you can see Newman Outdoor, Legends, Haymarket, those were built in the early 2000s for like $10 to $15 million. If you had to build those today, $70 to $80 million. Shaw Park, $13 million in 1999. U.S. Steel Yard, early 2000, $60 million. We don't envision that for Murfreesboro, to be clear. Stadia are actually getting smaller as opposed to bigger. So U.S. Steel Yard, Shaw Park, Northwestern Medicine Field seat between 7,000 and 10,000. The ideal market size here for Murfreesboro would be 4,500 to 5,000. Why Murfreesboro? Pretty simple. We look at what's going to make a successful stadium a platform. We have to have the right demographics. So this is demographic data we find in successful markets, both in affiliated baseball. And we find the same demographics in affiliated baseball. Murfreesboro has this. The other is population base. So we have to have a certain population base to make sure we have enough fans flowing through the stadium and corporate support, also being critical. The level of talent, it's a big question I always get, who are the players going to be playing here? 65% of our players on opening day this year played in double A or above. We had 25 players with MLB experience. These are some of the notable names that have come through the American Association of, there's baseball fans in here, I'm sure you recognize those. But as stated up there, we have 22 former American Association players in the big leagues this year. We had one player actually get signed by the Cincinnati Reds and make the appearance with the Reds at the big league level within a month. So that barrier between us and Major League Baseball is not as far as people think. Most of the time, we have ex-big leaguers with us only because they ran out of options, which is a very intricate collective bargaining agreement term for how many times they can send you down to minors. It's not that they're not great ballplayers. It's that contractually speaking, they may be getting more expensive because they're mandated to get paid more. It may be that they have a young prospect, they want to move out. Many, many players come to us that are of Major League, triple A, double A quality. So you're going to see a great product here in Murfreesboro, to be very clear. You're going to see a phenomenal product. We often believe the talent level on average is of double A level. Little bit more about the league and how we market to make sure you're just fortified in terms of what this is going to look like from a consumer perspective. We do televise our games. We're broadcast coast to coast on OTA. Obviously, streaming is becoming bigger and bigger. And we're about to sign a network deal, which will be made public next month. We also have our own proprietary platform called ab baseball.tv. So you can access our games from anywhere in the world at any point. We have a large digital presence as displayed by these numbers here. Both at the league level and team level, we spend exorbitant amounts of money on marketing, making sure the word about our product is getting out. And we're telling people the level of play and the excitement around our stadiums, and not just the baseball entertainment, but the family-friendly entertainment. Many of you, if you go through our media, you're going to see pictures of kids smiling, eating ice cream. It's all about that. It's really less about baseball. It's about families coming to the new town hall, political division melts away, and we're able to cheer on the local nine. That is what the American Association is about. So when we think about this stadium, think about it as a cultural platform with family-friendly entertainment. That's the reality of what this is. And as Jason mentioned, you're going to see 50 home games. But the reality is you're going to see a lot of non-baseball events, which we'll discuss in a minute. Other marketing assets you'll see through the American Association is just a lot of shoulder content, making sure you're getting up-to-date information and backstories about our players, which are really important. League services, we'll get into a little bit. But we're more than baseball, as mentioned. Really push year-round entertainment. That is one, is unlocked, the really economic engine that the stadium create and the whipsaw effect it would have on downtown. We get people coming not only to our baseball games, but to the other events. So this is an example of So this is an example of Milwaukee where they actually tried to build a downtown around the stadium. Fortunately for Murfreesboro, the downtown exists, you're putting in the stadium to activate an area around it. Other events that could come in, this has been a major success story in Kansas City, festivals that they run, tacos and tequila there, maybe it's tacos and sweet tea here. It's all culturally based. It's culturally based. So if you go to Lake Country, Milwaukee, Cheese Curd Festival, Mac and Cheese Festival, you go to Kansas City in Cleburne, brisket, barbecue. Again, cultural platform. A success story about year-round activation in our stadiums is the Amaze Light Festival in Chicago. 40,000 people in months where baseball stadiums are traditionally empty, you're seeing them activated. Now this event has moved to Kansas City and Milwaukee with record sales. So when we think about stadium, think about it as an entertainment venue, as I've said before. This is more of a, for the city council to know that your team will be supported at the league level. We make sure you have sales training, your staff has sales training through the league level. We make sure that our content creator program is putting out appropriate marketing. We have outside third-party agencies to help your team sell corporate partnerships as well. We make sure we have minimum standards for production, making sure viewership is quality no matter where you go as well. And then most importantly is employment. So our teams bring both full-time and part-time employment. We make sure to develop those employees so it's not we work this year and we're gone the next. We want to move young people, high school and college age students, from part-time jobs to internships to full-time jobs. So starting in 2024, we'll have an employee development program that lays out a blueprint of introducing young people to jobs in sports management and using our facility and our team as a platform and really an incubator for those students to move into the sports industry. Finally, again, our front office, and this is just the executive team, myself, my deputy commissioner Josh Buckholz with a long history in professional baseball, and our director of umpires Ron Teague, who used to run Major League Baseball's umpire school. We're then supported by a number of staff in broadcast, marketing, sponsorship, and other areas. So with that, thank you so much. I appreciate the time, I appreciate the patience, and I'm open to any questions from council.
I have a real quick, I wanted to share with y'all, I had four questions. I met Josh for the first time this morning and actually had met Jason for the first time yesterday morning, but I had a, why Murfreesboro? I mean, you've sort of said, this may be, if you want to come up and say as well, but why, why Murfreesboro?
For the American Association, and I showed the slide around demographics, it starts with data. Data is really important when making business decisions. The demographics fit, you have the population base, and you already have an ecosystem downtown that makes sense for a stadium. In fact, you have an area, the village being one, that has the ability to be activated through a stadium. So if I think about other parallels with cities that have been successful, St. Paul, Minnesota really comes to light. They had a stadium that was built out in an area that didn't really make sense, there was nothing around it. They moved downtown and built a stadium into an area that had abandoned warehouses, that wasn't really visited, crime. It totally activated the downtown area, restaurants, retail, offices, a park that just came alive with people because they moved so much foot traffic through. And when we look at Murfreesboro and the potential of the location of the stadium, I see a downtown with retail. As we all know, retail in this country struggles. What baseball does, in baseball stadiums, is it creates foot traffic past retail. That foot traffic feeds retail and brings a downtown alive. So those three components are important. And I'll also just speak to Jason. Ownership. What makes stadiums and teams successful is great ownership. Jason's background in entertainment is really crucial. And I say this as an attorney myself, trying to integrate attorneys, accountants, and doctors to become owners is a long learning curve. We don't have that with Jason. Jason sold tickets to sporting events, he's built sporting events. So we have very high standards for our ownership group. It should give you solace as a city that they have to be vetted through us first before you even do. And nobody wants bad owners or bad operators sitting around our table because we're only as strong as our weakest link. So we've done the vetting with Jason and we feel very comfortable with him and I think you should as well.
My second question, I think you answered why downtown. Or have you seen these type of facilities more successful downtown as opposed to outskirts or what?
Yeah, and fortunately for Murfreesboro, we learned a lot in this industry about what doesn't work. So we've seen stadiums built on the outskirts of town at some exit that they're trying to develop around. Those traditionally have not worked. And so they built stadiums hoping development would come. Now here's what we know works. We know that when you have an ecosystem of downtown that already exists and you already have foot traffic, you already have parking facilities, you already have utilities, cost of building a stadium goes down and everyone thrives around it. The other avenue that works is like Ballpark Commons I showed, where the development comes at the same time as the stadium. And cities, mostly suburbs that don't have a traditional downtown, are trying to build what you already have, density around a stadium. So for us, we look at the success of other markets and places that have been successful. You have that formula here already in place, you're just missing the stadium.
And then three and four, why did Major League Baseball partner with your league? And then there's a lot of rumors going on that Nashville is going to get a Major League Baseball team. How will that, how would that affect Murfreesboro?
I'll start with the former. Major League Baseball came to us, as I said, to grow the game of baseball and they felt that we were a catalyst for that. We go to areas that Major League Baseball can't because affiliates can't be in the shadow of Major League markets. Territorial restrictions, similar to any other franchise, they can't place teams in certain areas. The other part is if you look at Fargo, Winnipeg, Sioux City, Sioux Falls, pretty rural areas. And there's not enough bigger cities around it to make sense for affiliated baseball. And let's face it, Major League Baseball is cutting affiliates. Now, if Nashville gets a Major League team, this may sound nonsensical, but we actually think that's a huge benefit for Murfreesboro. We have teams that sit in the shadow of Major League cities that thrive. Kansas City, Milwaukee, St. Paul when they were in our league, now triple A with the Twins, Cleburne, Texas. Those cities actually do really well because more baseball is good for us. When people become baseball fans of Major League teams, they look for more baseball. And let's face it, we're a different product than Major League Baseball. That's the best baseball in the world. We're an entertainment product for families that's affordable. So if the kids are watching Major League Baseball, we want to and believe and know, based on the success stories of those other teams in major markets, we can give them out to our games. So the more baseball, the better. Let's have them watching baseball instead of something that is not as productive, fun, appealing, or family-friendly. So Major League Baseball in Nashville will be good for us.
Thank you, Mayor. You already answered the question as far as why downtown. My concern, well, first of all, I'm going to say, based on what I'm hearing and what I'm seeing, I'm not for this project. Okay, I just, right now, I'm just not for it. And the location, Cannonsburg, that's, that's history here in Murfreesboro. And you know, you just can't dig up history and move history somewhere else. What is your landscape like? I mean, you're just going to dig up all the homes there, the historical?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman, there is no scenario in which we are going to dig up, be a part of, do anything to Cannonsburg in conjunction with this council or the community, period. There's no digging up, there's no relocation. We're not going to be a part of that, period. I can't say it any clearer. As to your first comment, it's our job to hopefully earn your support. And as I said at the outset, I think the potential beauty here is why Murfreesboro? To start in that square, have a meal, stroll down through Cannonsburg and enjoy a wonderful moment with your family, your friends at a stadium. I mean, that is, that is superb. That's as good as it gets. And that's what Murfreesboro offers. So the stadium, to the extent that it evolves and happens, Councilwoman, works hand in glove with Cannonsburg, just clearly, and it all works together. There are some other locations where Cannonsburg would not be impacted at all. And you know, I believe those should be looked at from an architectural and an engineering standpoint in conjunction with, in conjunction with the citizens. But that's what I said at the outset, we, we became aware of the concerns over Cannonsburg and I'm looking forward to the comments from, from Lisa and everyone else and Barbara today because I think we have worked through a lot of those issues and would work together in the future.
So Cannonsburg as it is now, it won't be touched as far as this stadium is concerned?
There are two locations, potential locations, based on whatever you might support or direct.
Would you want to say it, Jason? Can I ask the audience? I promise when y'all speak, we're going to listen and a lot of y'all have not been to our meetings. We always try to let the people who are presenting to speak. So those of y'all who are talking, there's plenty of room outside if you want to talk. Let's please give them the respect that we give at the meetings to listen to what they have to say. Thank you.
No, we have walked the site numerous times this week. And there's one site that's particularly interesting because it would be on the backside of Cannonsburg. You've got a water tower, you've got some beautiful trees in front of what's called the Hooper property. It appears that there could be enough land there to put a stadium that would work beautifully with Cannonsburg, you know, almost as if it would be one campus. And it doesn't impact any of the, and I defer to others who may have an opinion on this, it wouldn't impact any of the buildings of historical, meaningful significance at all.
Madeline, one of my, one of my things, as we get into this discussion and, you know, to alleviate any community concerns, first of all, I want to tell those who are in the audience, I apologize if, for a social media post that made any reference to relocating or demolishing Cannonsburg. I would like to propose that in any memorandum of understanding that we look at, that it is clearly specified and put in writing that Cannonsburg will not be harmed, touched. The only thing that could be done at Cannonsburg would be to improve the existing structures because the plain fact about Cannonsburg, if Cannonsburg were, if it was a blank slate of property there right now, you couldn't put Cannonsburg back there in 2023 solely because it's in the floodplain and it's next to a blue line stream. So I would, just to make sure that everything is clear, it would be great to have something in writing in the memorandum of understanding that says Cannonsburg will not be harmed, it will not be touched, it will not be relocated, it's there. And so that way, for everybody with a save Cannonsburg sign, you have saved Cannonsburg because it will be in writing. So that way... One thing I can say from the 790 comments and the emails that we have all gotten, we hear you, we appreciate your passion and you know, I know Bill will talk about this later because Bill is a big dialogue and process person. This is sort of how the process works. I mean, we had just met, as a council, met with Jason yesterday and I think some of us could and some of us couldn't, but there's no nefarious like, hey, this is behind the scenes. I mean, literally, I would have made a, it was my suggestion, the mullet heads, because that's, so I met Jason yesterday with his mullet, first time that I've ever, ever met, that was a joke by the way. The memorandum of understanding, I think, Madeline, to your point, would be very beneficial to have something that delineates and says Cannonsburg saved. And if we want to put save Cannonsburg in there or saved Cannonsburg, however we need to do that would make sense.
We certainly second that.
Yeah, we can certainly...
I'll sign the petition if somebody will send me the link to the petition if that, if that works.
Yeah, I think, I think it's, and it harkens on what you said, Mayor, and what I said in the beginning is, we're focused in a discussion a lot on one site and we have a long way to go. We have engineering, we have architecture, we have a lot of things to know where you put a building, any kind of building, certainly a building of this size. So while we're focused and the interest is on that one side, you know, the idea now has started in do we find the right location? And so certainly putting in the MOU to save Cannonsburg is fine, but I don't want people to think that's really where it would go because there's potentially other places it could go.
But to be clear...
You have to work through it all.
A non-binding memorandum of understanding, you guys can't spend a penny without coming back to the council and asking for authorization to spend any money besides your time having this discussion.
Yeah, and that's the next step and that's, that's kind of the city internal process so we didn't bother these guys. But yes, that's, that's true. A non-binding MOU, all it is, is a reflection of what we've talked about now, where the understanding between the parties are at this point in time. It allows the process to take place at the, at the league level to a certain extent because they'll have some paper that does reflect understanding so that they can do their process. But yeah, it's not a legal document that's, that's enforceable at this point, it's too early in the states. We're starting now. So I don't want, I don't want to, to have people to know exactly where the stadium's going to go because we don't know yet.
I get why people don't trust politics. The local level is much different. So for those that think that this is a done deal or that we are all behind the scenes, have all made our decision, the information that you guys are seeing today is the first time that we've seen this information as well. So this is like step one of 497 steps that would have to go through, a very public and transparent process, public hearings, community meetings. There's a lot of process that has to go through. So I don't want y'all to think that you're there and the decision's already made. We're seeing this for the first time as well. Bill?
I was a couple...
Okay, go ahead.
I, for one, you know, I have nothing against baseball, nothing. It's slow, but I have nothing against it. But, and they spit too much, the players. But anyway, my concern as a councilperson and as an individual, before we do anything more with sports, I personally would like us to do something for affordable housing in the homeless. I mean, I think that's where the city needs to go and not forget sports, but now your location, if you do stay at Cannons, if you go to Cannonsburg, I'm very concerned with the traffic. I mean, I cannot imagine, because I don't know if you, or Mr. Rosen, Commissioner, I forgot your name, no disrespect, but we are getting ready to probably put a hotel in that vicinity, we're going to put townhomes, and I know we're going to build a garage, but I am very, very, very concerned with the traffic that's going to be there. Another thing, how much of the money to build this, to get it going, is going to be on the taxpayers? How much is, is going to actually be on the taxpayers?
So I don't think they can answer that because I think, like I've not seen anything, I don't think any council membership's seen anything financial yet.
No, but what I'm saying is, maybe not directly to you all, but will anything, I'm not asking for a figure, but will any money be thrown on the taxpayers for this project?
I think that's part of the process. We're, we're a long way from, from starting to where, how it is that the project gets financed because we don't know yet until we have some engineering and design work as to what the project's going to be. So there's, there's a lot of discussions before we get there.
And I just have two more questions. You've stated...
Sean had a comment in regards to the...
As far as financing stuff to protect the taxpayers, can we get an outline or a look at a sports authority?
Yeah, yeah, we are working on an outline on a sports authority that made sense on other aspects of the city's athletics facilities. And so certainly, yeah, we'll get, we'll get to that point pretty quick.
And Madeline, like traffic, I think that would be a discussion, much like a development that would come through on the conceptual level that I'm sure that there will be parking studies, traffic studies, all of those things that would have to come through that process to be addressed. So I'm sorry, go ahead, Madeline.
Just two more questions. I don't know if we consider, are going to consider, we have a great university here, MTSU. What are we doing with them as far as trying to partner with them? I know years ago, we gave them about $5 million, was it the stadium?
Yep. For a couple of facilities, yeah.
For Springfield, for Springfield, the soccer facility and...
I'd like to see more communication or more coming together with the university because we have a great university here, it's known nationally as being the greatest, in my opinion, university.
We met with the university yesterday.
Okay. And my last question.
What was their reaction?
Very positive. They're, they're excited, there's a lot of, of...
From Dr. McPhee?
Not Dr. McPhee, with the athletic director, Chris Masaro. Chris Masaro, because this is kind of in his wheelhouse. So giving him an update on where we're at, there's, there's a, again, we're starting, so there's a lot of, a lot of talk. But I think, and Jason was there, I think he can, he can add too, that there, I think it was a lot of positive feedback. He's excited, it helps their programs. So yeah, I think it's, it's a good thing. So, yeah, I think it's, it's a good thing.
My last question. On one of your screens, you indicated that, you stated that we've already received outstanding engagement with the public to date. What public? What part of the public?
I'd say the folk, many, many of the folks in this room over the past week on the, on the issue of Cannonsburg itself. And I, I will say that if, if the passion over Cannonsburg is any indication, and that translates into attendees and fans and season ticket holders, we're going to have some great crowds in Murfreesboro, some great crowds in Murfreesboro.
Well, I'd say a last question, this is the last one, the seating capacity, whether we...
4,500, give or take. It depends on design and size of what we work with, but give or take 4,500.
And with you, with the parking facility, are you all going to build a facility there? Are you going to depend on the facilities we have or the parking spaces we already have?
The latter, because for two reasons. One is it brings down the cost of the project, and two, we think that's a great benefit for downtown. Again, that's for the community and the council to ultimately decide. But the idea is if people are parking in city garages or the county garages near restaurants and bars, it's going to create more commerce for the small businesses in downtown.
Yeah. I just don't see us right now having the capacity to park even 500 more cars, and I can't see 4,500, but that's just me.
Wouldn't be 4,500 cars, that would be if this, if the stadium were sold out, it would be far fewer cars.
But it'd be at least 1,000, wouldn't you say?
Could, yeah, could be.
And I don't see us having that capacity.
No, we do have the parking studies and we'll continue to look at that.
I think what Ms. Gels Harris is saying, you know, when she asks these questions, I don't, I think she's being rhetorical, and you're right, Madeline, I share the same concerns as you. You know, I, for people that, that met me when I was campaigning last year, for people that voted for me, you know that open space is really important and parks are really important. And thank you all for coming out and for signing petitions and advocating for Cannonsburg, but that's not the end. Like, just because Cannonsburg stays, I know that's what we all want, but there are a lot of other issues we need to think about, like parking, like whether or not this is going to be paid for by the taxpayers, affordable housing, where are the homeless going to go? There are so many other factors here. So just because we saved Cannonsburg, I still want the community to stay involved because obviously this is a big decision, and I want it not to be one we take lightly. So thank you guys, and as always, I agree with you, Madeline.
Bill? Couple of questions, and one because I am a baseball guy for a long time, and, but that doesn't mean I'm necessarily for this because I think we're exploring some opportunities, and there's lots of questions that have to be answered. But one question related to, could you explain again the relationship between American Association teams and MLB? What is that relationship?
Yeah, let me see if I can find the slide. So one, I'll just say it at its core, it's a marketing relationship. So when we meet with Major League Baseball, we do formally twice a year, plus go to winter meetings, fall meetings, spring meetings, meet with them in spring training facilities, we talk about how to grow the game of baseball. And there's a few programs that should be noted here that, again, we look like affiliated baseball. So the MLB promotions, the MLB network media, the employee side, community ally side in the youth program, had never been afforded to the, what was then known as the independent leagues. Major League Baseball, through this partnership, really gives us all that marketing material, access to potential baseball players, access to just a spotlight that we never had before. So when you think about this relationship, it's mostly a marketing relationship, and the power and the engine of Major League Baseball to promote the game. The other part of that is formalizing the relationship on the player transfer market. We're an extension of their labor pool for players, we help develop players, but we're autonomous. We play to win, they play to develop players. When you see a team, if they're fortunate enough to come to American Association in Murfreesboro, they're playing from Murfreesboro. When you see an affiliated team in Chattanooga or Knoxville, those players aren't playing from Knoxville or Chattanooga, they're actually competing against their teammates. They want their teammates to fail so they can get moved up somewhere else. The players choose in our league to come to Murfreesboro. So to answer in summary, it's a huge marketing relationship that we never had before, the engine of MLB to give us these programs, and two, it's the player transfer side, the labor market that we extended them.
But it's not tied to a particular franchise?
It is not, except for number seven, there's a community ally program where a big league team can ally with the Murfreesboro team to have cross-marketing. And what that would mean, as an example, would be their radio broadcaster comes down and calls some games, they have alumni from that particular team come over. You have your Murfreesboro marketing in their big league stadium, whether it's on the concourse, whether it's on their video board promoting Murfreesboro's team in that big league stadium. So that's the cross-glatterization. I should note, the world's evolving quickly. So what I tell you today, next year might be a lot heavier integration with Major League Baseball and particular teams. We've seen an evolution of this since the 70s and 80s about co-op teams, independent teams playing in affiliated leagues. So that is all changing, but I will share, we're positioned better than we ever have been before as it relates to Major League Baseball and the stability of teams at our level.
Okay, let me put another question because this is important, I'm sure it'll show up when we start, if we, if we proceed to do some of the financial, you know, sharpen your pencil and find out what it is, but to me, it's critical when we start talking about a family-friendly kind of experience. What is the average cost of tickets? I'm sure you have that.
I have it. Actually, we just did a post on this and made it public the other day. The average cost to go to a major league game for a family of four, to buy four tickets, four sodas, and I think it's a hot dog, is like $225. We're at $68. So significant difference in the cost of entry. And as I said, in relation to the Major League Baseball, if Nashville gets an MLB team, does that hurt us? No, it actually helps us because we're a different product altogether and much more family-friendly.
Okay, so $68 is...
On average.
Okay.
So obviously, if you're in Chicago, it's going to be a little more, you're in Sioux City, Iowa, it's a little less.
Okay. $2.5 for a major league?
For a family of four and those four items on average. And then again, you go to LA, it's more, you go to Milwaukee, it's less.
Well, I took my daughter to a Braves game, and I think it was significantly more expensive than that.
Could be.
You put on a bunch of food and a pair of...
Yeah.
I was only buying one hot dog.
Yeah, the hot dogs are, are that. You can't count on the beer you drank. Yeah, right. If you know me, you know that's a rhetorical question.
It was a big saving.
But anyway, let me speak a little bit to the process because I have another hat too, not only a baseball hat, but I think people understand that my family and myself have been involved in history and the arts in our community. And we as a community are evolving, you know, we're trying to become what we're, and discovering what we are to be. And learning how to respectfully dialogue with each other over controversial issues is something we all need to provide, learn from. We need to learn how to dialogue, even, even when we disagree, but do it respectfully. And, and I was, and this analogy is always going to fall short, but I see Burl back there, so he'll understand my... I remember being a, we were in high school together, so I remember being a freshman in high school and I, and the first time I started dating, I thought, man, I was just shocked that anybody wanted to go out with me. And it just seemed like, wow, somebody, and then all of a sudden, I realized, well, wait, you know, I, I can pick and choose, and it's worthy that I pick and choose. And that's kind of where we are as a community. We were at a time when we were just, anybody want to date? Anybody wants to spend money in our community and do something? We were pursuing it hot and heavy. I remember, I wasn't on council at that time, but I remember, I've got pictures of when the ribbon was cut. Any of you interested, I'll show them to you. Pictures of when the ribbon was cut to open Cannonsburg. We were just glad to have anything going. And Mayor Westbrook's, who I remember so well, he and my dad and I pitched horseshoes on that side of Cannonsburg when it was first opened. Value a place in our community, and I appreciate all the efforts that people have made to, to value it, to express their love for it. Even if they haven't been there for five years, I saw something this morning, most of people are more passionate that haven't been there in five years. You know, I haven't been to Monticello, or I haven't been to the Quakenon, I haven't been to the Hermitage, but I still kind of glad that they're, they're there. And it does something to the quality of life of our community to value these places that have been a significant part of our community. And I appreciate the ownership group stepping out and recognizing that. And I appreciate your voices that have made that very clear to us as elected officials, but also those people that are developers, made it very clear, this place is a special place in our community. But I would encourage us, thank you for coming out, thank you for the input that we've had, but let's learn from this so that we, as we relate to each other, whether they be citizens or elected officials, that we learn how to respectfully dialogue and not necessarily assume the worst in each other. Because if we talk, sometimes our conversations lead us to a path forward, when we actually are able to listen to each other and hear each other. And we don't have to agree, but it might find a path forward that is truly the best answer for what our community is. And we will, I don't know of any of my colleagues that aren't willing to hear you and want to listen to your input and help shape the decision that we make going forward. We as a, a community are going to have a whole lot of decisions in front of us, and it's not bad to explore them. This smorgasbord of opportunity is going to be there because we are a great place to live. If we disagree on a million things, the one thing we'll all raise our hand to, this place is special, our community is special. And we have to be able to dialogue with each other, we have to believe in each other. And there's one other thing that I, I would encourage you to do, as in this situation, trust the process. The process of your input, the process of our understanding of the facts, the process of people making an offer, shaping that to the community, and not assume that, you know, there's some evil intent behind everybody. We could be counterculture to our nation now because it seems like we're so adversarial. We only, it's either us or them. And what do we end up doing when we just stay in our holy huddles, I used to call them? When we just stay in people, with people that agree with us? We don't move and nothing happens. And I want us to see, see something different. I've got a great idea, as we, as we talked the other day, about a great opportunity where for years, and asked the chamber and the arts council and all these people, there's been this adversarial relationship between sports, tournament town, and the arts and culture in our community, music and arts and culture in our community. Wouldn't it be special if we could find a way to marry those two, those two seemingly adversarial positions and rebrand our community as a place where arts are celebrated, music is celebrated, and sports is celebrated, and they brought it together? And that's what Murfreesboro could be. I think, because we have a unique story with music, we have a unique story in our area with sports, and we have a unique story to tell in the arts. And I think if we could get all those communities communicating together and thinking of what opportunities, synergy could we create working together instead of at opposition to each other, something really special could happen in our community. But that being said, all the questions need to be asked, all the financials need to be looked at, the traffic study, the dollars, how they're going to, how we're going to fund something like this, all this has to be, we have to pursue that, but that's due diligence. And that, I think, is what the MOU is proposing to us, to say, do the due diligence before we get too far out on the limb, from their standpoint and from our city's standpoint, do the dollars make sense for their, from their standpoints and from our standpoint, does it make sense from our position? But if we work together on this and you continue to give us input like you have in the last couple of weeks, we're going to make the right decision going forward. We as a community will make the right decision going forward. So anyway, that's all I have to say.
Yeah. Very powerful, thank you. I just, it actually ties into something you were saying, but I wanted to answer some questions regarding parking and the university relationship. And keep in mind for the constituents and the council, these are all issues every city has wrestled with regarding stadiums, and they've all come to an agreement about what's best for their community. And I think here, hopefully, that conversation continues, you can find the same. But in terms of university relationship, we have three stadiums that partner with the local university, and they all work out very well. UW-Milwaukee and Franklin, Lincoln and the University of Nebraska, Fargo and North Dakota State University, all have a great symbiotic relationship in terms of the stadium, the use of the stadium, and it activates the stadium so much more when the university is playing in the stadium. And the university loves it from a recruiting standpoint to play in a professional baseball stadium. So I just want to note, those things occur, and they're great for it, and I would encourage that conversation to continue. The other one is parking. To note about parking, our games are played at night, typically in, in traditional parking facilities downtown, they're day use. So we're actually activating parking that sits vacant at night. And then when we do play day games, those are on the weekend, which, those are also vacant, and now we're filling up those parking spots so people are walking past retail on the weekends as well. So I just want to touch on those two issues, and to note, you're not alone in, in these conversations, we can learn from other cities that have accomplished this and done great things in their community. And we at the league are here as a consultant to point you to those opportunities and, and those that have been successful. So, thank you.
And Madeline made a good comment about affordable housing. I think that's something, I was in a mayor meeting last week, mayor of the community dealing with affordable housing right now, but also to the Journey Home that's, you know, in that area right now. So Dr. Galloway, I've had two, or one meeting with Dr. Galloway last week, they are working on their capital campaign right now, so all those in the audience, they're trying to get their facility funded to start new construction in first quarter of next year. They met with Kristi Houston last Wednesday. And so the city is trying to find continual ways to partner with Journey Home to be able to, they've already purchased their property out off of Middle Tennessee Boulevard to be able to build their new facility, and it's like anything, costs are so expensive right now, they're trying to figure out how they're doing that. So that's something, you know, Greenhouse just recently worked and finished on, and now Journey Home's doing that at the same time. So I know they would appreciate any support. Sean?
Thank you for, Commissioner, for making me not have to follow Vice Mayor Shackleton. Constituents, thank you so much for coming out, being passionate, phone calls, emails, texts, personal one-on-one meetings. I love seeing all the energy about my hometown that my family goes back seven generations with. So I, I love seeing the passion. This is the, just like everybody else has said, this is the start of a very, very long and due diligence-laden process. And I'm, I'm open for a conversation, the money part is, the money part to me is the most important part because I don't want the taxpayers to necessarily be the, for the whole burden. I think the traffic, we can work out because it's special event traffic. We can, we can get away from special event traffic pretty easily. If you look at the amphitheater that was built in Franklin, when it first opened, everybody was talking about how much of a nightmare it was to get in and out of. I went to a show there last week that was a sellout, and I was on the interstate from leaving that show in less than five minutes. And it was a sellout show because they had done some corrections to their event traffic to just flow traffic better. So the, the traffic can be worked out with, with some special event traffic easing. And like you said, off-hour parking, I think it works real well. And, and the flavor of baseball, and I'm not a baseball guy, I'm a football guy, so baseball's the exact opposite, it's too boring for me, like Madeline said. But the flavor of baseball, if you look around the country, other than the Braves who went to the suburbs, all the other teams are doing stadiums downtown now, so it's just kind of the new flavor.
Question the council, and I echo this as well to all the constituents, believe it or not, we do care. I mean, Sean sent me a, Sean sent me a text message and says, said, how do you, how does it make you feel that people are saying nasty things about you online? And I said, well, you never get used to that. I mean, you're human, you don't like hearing that you're, you know, corrupt, that you don't listen, that you're in it because you're padding your pockets, building, trust me, I can tell council members who sit here with us, if y'all think that we are doing this for our financial gain, I can show you how much we get paid on a monthly basis and how much grief that we take. We are not doing this for financial gain, we do it because we love our city. The only thing that I would tell y'all, I moved here in 1992, and there were $35,000 people that lived in Murfreesboro. We're garnering 170,000 people. I had a guy that was emailing me last night telling me how, how, how bad it was that all the transplants had moved into Murfreesboro. And there's a whole lot more people who live in Murfreesboro. I routinely joke to say the 35,000 people that were here in 1992 when I moved here, y'all can gripe about traffic all you want to, you have the right to do that, but the other 140,000 people that have moved here like I have, you can't say a word because you caused the traffic because you moved here and you're not from here. So, I mean, we can start doing card carriers, like original lifelong Murfreesboro resident, but the only thing that I say, a lot of the people who are from here are not born and raised here, but that doesn't, like me, but that doesn't mean that we love our city any less than the people who were born here. And you look on this council, Kurt's not from here, I'm not from here, Austin, are you from, originally born and raised here?
I grew up in Knoxville.
Yeah, so...
Yeah, so.
Go Auggles.
We love.
And go Wood Raiders, I got my masters there, too.
I think going into what Bill said, Bill was saying about coming together as a community, you know, my boys were born and raised here, and they're gonna be able to come back and say, "I was born and raised in Murfreesboro, Tennessee." But there's a lot of us that still love this city and we're not from here. So the council needs to make the decision. We're not voting on anything today, we're not talking about financing, parking, the council needs to make the decision if we're okay with a, with a non-binding, which means it's, we'll do the comment, we need to make sure that we're okay with letting staff pursue the direction of even discussing whether it's, it's part of what we want to do.
I got a few comments, Shane. I mean, if we're getting ready to wind this up.
We gotta have, we're gonna, we've got seven people who want to speak as well.
Well, I'll try and keep my three pages of questions as brief as I can. So, I guess for Mr. Rose, sorry we couldn't meet yesterday, I know you had a conflict, and so this is really the first time we've seen each other eyeball to eyeball. So I appreciate your efforts in meeting with the Kennesburg people and running around and trying to get a good, I guess, feel for the area. That being said, I've got a few questions for you, and don't take any offense, but I'm just doing my job because at the end of the day, I want to protect our taxpayers and also want to protect our city brand at the end of the day. It's gotta be a win-win. You know, you want a winning proposition, so do we. So you'd made some comments in the D and J, it was in the paper this morning, I read it, something to the effect of, "Any plan negatively impacts Kennesburg, you will not be a part of it." Correct.
Correct.
Are you willing to put that in writing in the MOU?
Absolutely.
Okay. And you signed the petition yesterday, which I applaud, and I'm glad the mayor's willing to, I'll sign it as well. What's your thoughts on referendums?
On putting it to a public vote?
Yes.
We, I'm familiar with the process, we would, we would not, we're not part, I don't want to be a part of a rancorous debate. That's what due diligence is for us, too. It's both financial, it's spiritual, it's political. And if this ends up being a process that's too rancorous, or, I'm just, not a stage in my life where I'm interested in doing that.
Yeah, I understand that.
This is supposed to be a rising tide and a joyful process, and one that hopefully can do a lot of good for the community. And if the community and you as leaders of it decide that it's not for you, that's okay. We got to know each other a little bit.
Yeah.
Said, "Hey, thank you."
And I'm like Sean, at the end of the day, I don't want anything that's gonna affect the taxpayers. I don't want any sort of taxpayer funds or bonds or anything like that. I mean, if it's not making money for you, you can pack up and go elsewhere, and then we're stuck with finding a new tenant on a stadium, so.
No, no. First of all, I think candor is very good at this stage, too, as we're getting to know each other, and we can either have a long embrace or a quick fun goodbye.
Yeah.
The MOU does not contemplate an ability to walk away after three or four years. In fact, one of the things, at least in the non, again, to emphasize the mayor's points, it's a non-binding NOU, MOU, there was an insistence of a very long, of a long-term lease, okay? So that answers the first question.
And that's a question I've got for the commissioner, but we'll come back to that.
Yeah, that, so we, you know, we needed, the MOU served to say, are we in, to borrow an analogy, are we in the ballpark in terms of, at the, at the start of the game? And I think it does do a pretty good, pretty good job of that. And we were agreeable to, yes, putting that particular stipulation in. But as it relates to publicly financed stadiums, that's the way minor league baseball stadiums are funded. And we're a tenant of yours, and we pay whatever rent is to be negotiated, and hopefully we produce a lot of good. In case where they have not been, the few exceptions where they have not been, what has happened is, there is a giant piece of land where a stadium is dropped down, and there's a whole bunch of development, apartments and commercial activity that all comes around it. And even in those cases, there's tax breaks that go back in to help pay for the stadium and its infrastructure. We're talking about a downtown stadium here, and all of the successes that downtown stadiums have, and the policy benefits that accrue because of them. We're not talking about going, I looked at a couple of sites when I came in June that were out, way out on freeways and stuff. Someone might be interested in doing that, that's not us. I love the romance and the charm of a potential, and the benefits of a downtown stadium.
I don't argue that, that a downtown stadium works in a lot of areas, but I'm like every other member of this council and the community, and I appreciate your support in saying that we're not gonna touch Kennesburg, we're not gonna harm Kennesburg. Back to the financial piece, the Cleveland team, which I guess the commissioner, that was a $25 million bond approved by the voters, which is why I ask. But if you're not in support of that, because I would be in support of that being part of the MOU, that we have that in our back pocket as a council to take it to a referendum for the citizens of Murfreesboro to approve if we're talking about taxpayer funds.
Councilman, if that's gonna be stipulated, we'll simply say, "Thank you, it was good to know you." I understand that the citizens have a right.
Yes, sir.
To take that if they're dissatisfied with the decision of this council at the end of the process. And I under, I understand that as a potential owner, that that could happen. It's our job to earn your support and the citizens' support so that we have a popular, enthusiastic community embracing this and all the potential benefits that it has. So I fully understand the constitutional rights that the citizens have, but to put it in the MOU, I, that's not, that's not something that I'm interested in doing. Additionally, in terms of what the commissioner discussed, there's significant impacts on timing in terms of the Clarksville and a potential Murfreesboro team coming in at the same time. And that likely would make that an impossible timetable to meet.
Yeah, I think, if I could add on, you know, the referendum process has a lot of legal considerations and cost considerations and other considerations that are important that have not been explored as of yet. You know, referendums are, they don't tend to be what they are modeled to be at the end of the day, for one. But the other thing is, I think talking anything about the economics or any kind of commitments on economics or how it's financed and everything else is really unfair at this point without the context of a larger economic impact study. So that the entire project is quantified, and there's some understanding of all the economics of it before we just talk about stadium costs.
Right.
Or stadium funding. Because there's, there's much more, and it's much more complex than that. And I would say, as far as a referendum, that type of information is very, very difficult to get out and have a broad level of understanding to make the referendum, a real true decision whether it is good for the community or not.
Will we be able to get, you know, I think the most important thing I would want to see right now is the economic impact plan on how was anticipated before we even get into how, I mean, you know, if the economic impact plan comes back and it doesn't even look like it would cash flow what the financing would be, then that's a, there's no need to talk about financing if the economic impact plan is that, is that bad. So how, when would that come?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a, it's a process that's been done quite a bit, it's always done with respect to sports facilities. So, again, we're at the very beginning stages. The next step would be to do a couple of things, a feasibility study, which would incorporate an economic impact plan and other aspects of development. So we'll be putting that together, an economic impact plan, we need to work with the team and probably the league to get the data that they'll, companies that do that will need. It'll take a few weeks, you know, a month or two to, to get all that data together. But once we do, then, then we can start modeling out how financing might occur, and then we can bring that back to council and have a full explanation of it. So it's, it's very early now to talk about or make any commitments, or, in all fairness, ask the team to make any commitments on financing just because we, we don't have that information yet, we don't have the data yet, starting on the process.
Yeah. For the commissioner, I got a question around the attendance figures. So your average attendance was, according to your website, 2668.
This year.
This year for regular season, pretty good attendance. But it seemed to drop during your playoffs.
Yeah.
That was the interesting thing. And I'll say this, you can agree or disagree, but I'll say that he's gotta make money. I get it. He's a businessman, he wants to, his team and this venue to be accessible, successful, that's just one component of it. There's only so many dollars that go around for sports, is what I'm getting at. I know you had earlier said that it thrives in cities where there are major league teams, like your Chicago franchise, great attendance. Even your, I want to say your Gary franchise, great attendance, and that's right there near Chicago. But in this type of a market where you've got the sounds, the Predators, the soccer, the Titans, Vanderbilt, and probably the biggest employer in the city, MTSU, that honestly, I think struggles athletically, if you look at baseball and football. I see this competing with that, and I just, and it will compete with high schools, too, to some degree. And those high schools depend upon the gate to support their programs. I guess, how have you mitigated that when you've got so many competing entities?
I've got a response, I'll start with actually the recent part about competition with the Titans and all that. Again, they're different products, those are different price points. I also believe Murfreesboro's a completely different market than Nashville. I think our crowd for this Murfreesboro game will come from Murfreesboro, and dollars won't escape to Nashville, they're going to those entertainment events, they'll actually stay here. It's also a seasonal thing. So you're playing in the summer where the college is not activated for any sports. The other sports you mentioned are also not activated, so. And then in relation to playoffs attendance, that's not dissimilar to any other level of sport, you know, whether it be affiliated baseball, minor league hockey, it's very tough to draw for playoffs because you can't plan those games, you can't pre-sell them because oftentimes we don't know when we're gonna be playing at home until it's two or three days before the event, everything's settled on the standings. We've mitigated against high school, and you'll note in our playoff schedule, we don't play on Fridays. High school football plays on Fridays, so we stay away from high school football, and we avoid those Fridays. We also, if I, one of the slides I show is ticket sales university, we're leaning in heavy on teaching our operators how to sell for playoffs. Chicago, as you noted, very successful in selling playoffs. Winnipeg, which did not make the playoffs this year, very successful in selling playoffs. Our other operators need to learn from them how to pre-sell playoffs even though you don't have dates, you don't have opponents. So we're leaning into that, but again, not dissimilar to other leagues. And in general, I don't see those competitors as direct competitors, indirect competition from maybe a sponsorship perspective, although there's different level of sponsors. And then in general, the entertainment dollar from a year-round perspective, but not a seasonal perspective.
You had mentioned average ticket price for a family of four with hot dogs and peanuts and Cracker Jacks and all that stuff. What's just the average ticket for one ticket to go into a stadium in this league?
$12.
A lot.
And Austin is a long-suffering, or long MTSU fan. I think, I think what MTSU deals with is a much different discussion than what we're dealing with right now.
I guess my point is, there's only so many, I've only got so much money. You know, I'm not independently wealthy like Sean over there, you know? I'm just picking at you, Sean. But the point is, there's only so many dollars one can spend. And so, you know, if they come in here, I hate to say it, but I kind of view it as it will compete with other entities that are vying for that dollar, and I just think it's something we need to be cognizant of.
I don't disagree. I do think the thing, and I, I think it's all, as we talk about candor, I think baseball would be great for Murfreesboro. I'm not sure, I think financially, that's where the rubber meets the road on financially, how it works. I think the thing that's different, and I'll be on the ball field Saturday and Sunday with my 11-year-old, I think the thing that's a little different, and I think Bill will speak to this, you're gonna draw from Coffee County, Cannon County, Shelbyville, Bedford County, Franklin County, areas where people will come into Murfreesboro that we don't have to educate, they drive here and then they leave, that will spend money, that are not coming to MTSU ballgames. And, you know, I was in Knoxville last weekend. You just pick and choose differently to.
Commissioner, you had, what about the noise? I got something this morning from a friend of mine in Milwaukee who actually goes to the games, lives near there, but I guess there's something about the noise for that particular stadium or that complex, and with this being a downtown possibility, and the fact that we're trying to build up the downtown with a hotel and condominiums and apartments, any merit to that, or?
Yeah, unique situation, Milwaukee. It's actually on an old landfill, and it's elevated, there's actually a ski hill on the property, so this is a very.
Hey, that's a great idea. We have got a downhill right down there.
Extremely unique. Extremely unique piece of property, the noise probably dissipates, but I know, even when I've been there, the city comes with a meter to register sound, and in his development agreement, and you could probably do one here if you'd like, there's a certain level he cannot exceed, if he does, he gets automatic fines for it.
Correct.
And I know he's passed those tests, but I can see where a neighbor could say, boy, because it's up above everything else, the noise does get out. And he also has an amphitheater there, he has an indoor football facility, he has offices, he has a ski, I mean, it's like a whole different ball of wax. Also to note about this particular property, which I think is really cool, train tracks. So you have trains, I assume, coming through there, making a lot of noise, we're probably gonna make a lot less noise than those trains. That's a reality. And you, as a city, can also say, "Listen, no fireworks past 10 o'clock, no noise past that," that's very common. I mean, again, all these conversations have happened in every city, and they've been overcome. I will note for the constituency council and Mr. Mayor, I do apologize, my family needs me at home, so if you see me run out, I'm not running for the hills, I just need to go, go home to my family, so I do apologize if I have to bolt.
Last question for me, for you, the lease terms. What's a typical lease for your teams? 10 years, 15 years, 20 years?
Thank you for bringing that up, because you noted the possibility of Jason absconding town and running all over. We don't want that either.
He's a PR guy, he would never say something that he didn't mean and run away, okay?
But we're in the same position you are, on this side of the table, that we need him here in Murfreesboro operating a great product. So what we do with the league is, we like you to have a lease term, at least that meets our affiliation agreement term. Affiliation agreements are a contract that the operator has with us, that they're not leaving our league. So in duality with your lease, they have an agreement with us, we also take a letter of credit. And I'm sure you're familiar with the council of letters of credit, whereby they hand it to us, and if they don't do something of a certain standard in our league, we take their money. So they need to perform for you locally, they need to make sure their bills are paid, or else we're taking their money away from them. That's your safety net, as well as our safety net, that they're gonna perform to a certain standard. Typical lease, to answer your question, 20 years with at least two 10-year options is what we like to see. Longer the better for us, much like, I'm sure, you're in the same position. And I wouldn't be standing here today, and I wouldn't have directed Jason to Murfreesboro if I was, if I didn't think this would be a great town for a stadium, and not only a baseball team, but an entertainment venue, friendly entertainment venue. And we do this all across the country, I've been doing this in professional sports, whether it's representing clients, or as a commissioner, or an owner, I may be left out, I used to own a couple of teams, I know this will thrive here, based on all the demographics, all the data, which prove that it's possible. And it's more possible, and more likely to succeed in a downtown stadium. So, I yield my time to Jason, and I do apologize.
Is that your plane out there?
Yeah. Is it, you have it warmed up for me? I need to go. No, I appreciate it, thank you.
Jason, for you.
Josh, nice to meet you, thank you for coming.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
You know, obviously you've got 50 games, and then you've got 310 days where it's in theory vacant. For you, it's important that you have events, concerts, whatever that may be. How open are you to, I know the MOU had said something about six days or six events for the city, but how open are you to partnering with other entities in the community, special needs community, for example? Or, you know, you picked that Boys and Girls Club as specific days to help raise funds for important community partners? I guess how open or how flexible are you on that number? Because I saw six in the MOU, which I kind of thought was a little low, to be honest.
But there's 351 days left, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a fair point, that, to be honest with you, I defer to staff on that, that was a randomly selected number, it was not suggested by our.
that. That was a randomly selected number. It was not suggested by ours. And remember, this is your facility. It's not my or our facility.
Right.
It would be owned by you. We would manage it, because the private sector tends to do a better job of recruiting and curating events. And that's something that I've done. And I, you know, I know baseball's not polo, and I know many in this room are not going to be familiar with polo. But when I created an event 12 years ago in Scottsdale, Arizona, it was zero. And I said, I want a different, diverse, inclusive event. And we now have a polo event, a lily-white sport. It is now a melting pot for rich, old, black, white, gay, straight, young, old. Okay? So it's that spirit that we would bring to this endeavor of recruiting events in Murfreesboro, curating events, which we have the financial resource and experience in doing. And, like I said, I mean, we, we had the pleasure of meeting with, I think it was Pastor Vinnie? Pastor Vinnie?
Vincent Windro.
Yeah. And we, we talked all about unusual services in a stadium. Easter services, other kind of services, and other faith leaders coming together to do that. That's unusual programming in a stadium. So to answer your question, of course, we would be open. I mean, we're, we're ultimately trying to, you know, do, do good. And so the more good we can do with special needs, or with faith organizations, whatever, of course, we'd be open to that. But that's your decision, not ours at the end of the day.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I stepped out for a second. The community events or city events, was there a question that was raised on that? I will tell you that we do have an MOU that the city would reserve the right to have, on a non-priority basis, a few events. You know, in the city, we have three large sports facilities. We have the right to do community events in them. Over the 12 years, we did one, and we didn't do it again. I think six is, is, for a baseball facility, is, is appropriate to do there. There's lots of reasons for the team to, and, and many times, we did one, because many times, we went to the venue and said, this is what we'd like to do in our community event. And they said, well, why don't you just let us do it? And for the same kind of cost and everything else, they were more than happy to do it. So we didn't have to do it. So I think, I think six is, is an adequate number. I think we'll find that we probably do less, because the team ownership will step up and do most of the community events we bring to them in any event. But that's why the number six is in there.
Yeah, I thought it was kind of low, to be honest.
It might seem low, but at the end of the day, it's probably six times what we would ever do at the end of the day, just based on experience.
Counselor, if you're okay, I think it'd be good to open up, and we've got seven people wishing to speak. If, if y'all weren't paying attention earlier, I want to reiterate, I apologize. I hear you. And thank you for your passion, for, for everyone that's here. All right, so let me give you our, for our public comment section, somebody's doing a run-up. So we've got, you'll come to the podium if you'll, I've got your name, I'll read your address. So you'll have three minutes if you'll direct any questions or comments to the council. We'll be, all of us will be diligently taking notes. So I have Steve Baughman, 315 North Manny Avenue. Is Steve, Steve's not here, okay? All right, Ms. Virginia Jenkins, 2911. Okay.
What, is that, is that reverb?
That's a, that's a plane doing a run-up. I don't...
I think it's reverbing off the mic, is me?
Ah, it's muted mine, so maybe it's a parable.
Yeah, I'll mute mine as well. Ms. Virginia Jenkins, 2911, Bowery Place.
I'm Virginia Jenkins. I've lived in Murfreesboro for 36 years. After I retired, 11 years ago, I started volunteering at Cannonsburg. What I had prepared to say is a little different slant now that, thank you, Mayor, that we have saved Cannonsburg. But yet, I'm confused. Channel 5 News last night, I didn't write the exact words, but you said something to the fact that Cannonsburg is saved for now, at this time. So is that incorrect? Have you changed your mind since then? And now it's...
I wanted to say Cannonsburg is saved now, it's kind of like, as in like, right now, yes, ma'am, it's saved.
Okay.
Not like, for, for not for the future.
I accept that. Is Jason, Jason, correct me if I'm wrong, but when we were talking the last few days, it seemed very clear that Cannonsburg, that the city of Murfreesboro would pay 100% of the revenues to build a stadium. Am I wrong?
Yes, ma'am. If you were, if you wanted to comment, if you had a question, if you had a question, just...
Okay, I would like that addressed later.
I'll write it down.
Okay. Because we were clearly told, I don't understand why we're getting vague answers about are the taxpayers going to pay for it, because my understanding is the taxpayer's going to pay for it. A few days ago, I wrote every member on the councilman with my, my concerns and questions, and I thank you to Mr. Shackleton and to Mr. Maxwell for writing me back. Today, I chose to wear period clothing, like I do when I wear tours, to try to give everyone a taste of what living history is. Cannonsburg gives its visitors a glimpse of what life used to be. It allows our guests to experience a sense of stepping back in time. It confades a sense of everyday life in years past. Even when there are no special events at Cannonsburg, one can have a wonderful time taking a walk, walking your dog, having a picnic. Families with toddlers often peek over the bridge and see the minnows, occasionally see one of the Otter families. It's a little hidden piece of green steps just away from town. I read something on Facebook the other day that said, "History just doesn't do it for children anymore." Well, I disagree. When I start a tour of schoolchildren or homeschoolers, I frequently begin with, "We're back, we're about to take a walk back in history. We're going to go back to 1877, and we'll come back." The kids' eyes light up immediately. They carefully observe and ask many questions. By the end of the tour, every child, every day, says something to the effect of, "History in a book is okay, but this is real. You've made history come alive. Tell me more." And I'm about to cry. I'm sorry, I'm that, I'm sincere about it. There's something special about walking through Cannonsburg Village. It's not just a flat book. It's three-dimensional. It involves all the senses, sight, touch, sound, and smell. We can hear the sounds of a moving train nearby, and the lovely sound from the gristmill moving. There's something distinct about the scent of an aged building. Maybe a mixture of moldy books, mothballs, cedar wood, and kerosene. There's still a hint of country ham in the smokehouse. I won't say anything about the outhouse. Yes. Simply said, we make history come alive. Can we bring activities back to Cannonsburg? The festivals, the food trucks, the Black Business Night, and even Prodd. Let's make Cannonsburg better. Let's put money where it needs to be, and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sheen.
Thank you for allowing me to speak today. I am a lifelong resident of Murfreesboro. My family has deep ties with Cannonsburg. A lot of what that I wanted to say right now is not relevant, since we've already gotten the go-ahead, but I just want to share my story and my experience with Cannonsburg being over there the majority of the last two days. I will say this, I don't go there all the time. Last year at Christmas, we drove through there probably 20 times with my granddaughter and my nephew, going, "Let's go back again. Let's go back again." It's fun. Couple weeks ago, she said to me, "Glam, let's go over there to Cannonsburg and see if they've got those lights on." Well, obviously, you don't, but she's five years old, and she doesn't realize that. So Cannonsburg is a wealth of Murfreesboro. It's, the city council in the past has referred to it as a gem. I agree with that. It's a teaching facility. It's a gathering place. Yesterday, it just did my heart good to sit on the bench out by the visitor's center with, with Jason and Lysa. And, you know, everybody was coming and going, and I was talking. And it did my heart good just to watch people walking their dogs, the children over there getting excited. Several of them, I talked to them. One little girl had a kite. She wanted to fly. Of course, she couldn't do that. But it was okay. They were having fun. Our children nowadays, they don't know where they came from. They, they think a schoolhouse, a schoolroom is a whiteboard and a desk. They don't know, you go in there, and you sit at a bench, and you had a slate with a piece of chalk, and your head was your computer. You know? They don't understand that. So when you go to Cannonsburg, you see how my family grew up. My, my grandparents got married on the porch in 1913 of Westbrook Store. When Mr. West, Mayor Westbrook's, when he opened it back up, he came to my grandfather and asked him if they would come over there and renew their vows. So they did that the day Cannonsburg opened up. I was 15 years old, and I wish I could go back to that day again and take it all in as an adult, because at 15 years old, you know, you don't appreciate what you saw. So Cannonsburg needs to be opened up to marriages, to rallies, whatever people want to have over there, because we have a very unique thing over there that's not being utilized, and we need to utilize it. And that's all I'm going to say. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
So my name's Lisa Sisco. I am a downtown resident now. I want to thank everybody, I've talked to everybody, I think, this past few days, except for one I couldn't catch. You've been gracious and patiently listened to our concerns, and I've learned a lot, and I appreciate that. A lot of what I was going to say is also moot now, because I do think we have saved Cannonsburg. So we appreciate that. I'm, I'm not against baseball. I've met some great baseball guys, and I think they are super smart, and I don't think they would come to this area if they had not done their homework. But I don't want to talk about baseball, because I'm not for or against baseball. I'm for Cannonsburg. And I just, at first, I thought that it was going to be either or. You can either have Cannonsburg, or you can have baseball. So I have ties to Cannonsburg. I grew up in the house that's in the very front, and my grandmother grew up in the house in the back. And so that's very important to us. I get credit or blame for starting that Facebook page, and I did not mean to stir up a big bruhaha. So I try to keep it nice, and I want to apologize if comments have been made that are inappropriate and ugly. I did not allow anybody else to post on that page, just to maintain that. I did, I mean, people do make comments, and I felt like they have the right to say how they felt. But if it had gotten ugly, I would have taken care of that. We do have 2018 signatures, and we'll have 2019 with you, and 2020. So that'll be good. I think that lets you know how many people do care about Cannonsburg, and we do want that preserved. I have a quote I want to read. It's from Marcus Garvey. "A people without knowledge of their past, history, origin, and culture is like a tree without roots. Trees that are not firmly rooted in rich, fertile soil do not grow, do not bear fruit. They cannot withstand strong wind or bear heavy loads." So I have had the privilege this week, and last several days, of spending time with the baseball guys. And I, I think they would make great neighbors. I do. If the city and the council decides that that's what's right for us, I fully believe that they will not do anything that would make a baseball stadium not be a good neighbor for Cannonsburg. We want to encourage people to come back downtown and walk, and spend money on our square. I know a lot of us probably go to the farmer's market. We try to support all the downtown businesses, and I feel like that this would be a good thing to support that, too. So thanks for coming and spending time with us. And, you know, we created this great downtown. They wouldn't be here if it wasn't so great. So I do think we should give ourselves a pat on the back for that. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, Lisa.
Mr. Linus Catenhed, 5306 Honeybee Drive.
Those chairs are beside me, and we've not, oh, I'm sorry. You didn't realize we have a singing.
I'm Ms. Linus, and I want Cannonsburg not to be wrecked. I've been going to Cannonsburg since I was a baby. The younger generations won't be able to go to Cannonsburg if you wreck it. Also, Cannonsburg has the world's largest cedar bucket. I bet you would be proud that Murfreesboro has that, instead of wanting to break the world's largest cedar bucket. Cannonsburg has been around a long time, and if you tear it down, there's no going back. It's so old, even my mother went there as a child. If you're supporting movie Cannonsburg, why not put the baseball field in that place?
Thank you, Linus.
Linus, for the city council.
That's right. Ms. Heather Catenhed, 5306 Honeybee Drive. And Heather, we're not going to ask how old you are. Thanks, Heather. This is great. Thank you, Linus. You did a great job. And I think you are officially the youngest person who's ever come to public comment section. So, great job.
So I'm Linus's mom, and that's my claim to fame today. But initially, I prepared a little speech that detailed my reasons that we, as a city, need to preserve Cannonsburg. I'm grateful that the developer of the project has also expressed his interest in preserving Cannonsburg as well, and that it seems like a lot of the city council and the mayor, they're now also saying that, you know, we want this to stay, and that whatever moves forward, Cannonsburg will be left untouched. So I'm grateful for that. Do have just a few questions I wanted to throw out there as well, which I thought that Councilman Maxwell asked really pretty much all the questions I had, so thank you. Wondering how much of this will be footed by the taxpayers, and it sounds like maybe there's a thought that all of it would be. I think it's important to know what the cost is, given that Mayor Carr just approved a 16% tax hike, and the residents of the city are already facing that increased tax burden. I think it's also important to know what the cost is in the face of inflation and a stagnant economy, when a lot of people in the community are struggling to pay for basic necessities and groceries. If you're familiar with the Blessing Box Ministry in Rutherford County, those boxes get filled up and emptied multiple times a day throughout the city. Constantly seeing posts and information about how people can't, you know, even afford groceries right now in this city. These are people that are not homeless. These are people that can't buy groceries. So I'm, I'm grateful about the fact that it's affordable, but even, you know, $60 for a family of four, like even that is a lot for some people right now with the way that the economy is at the moment. I also think it's important to note that the numbers on Cannonsburg attendance that have been shared, some of them, I don't feel that they're true numbers, because of the fact that events were shut down, you know, a few years ago. And I'm not even fully sure, you know, why that happened. I've heard various reasons for it, a lot of rumors about it. But the low attendance numbers are reflective of the fact that events were shut down. And so I think it's important to be aware that this isn't necessarily a venue where nobody's coming ever, and like, we need, like, all this, you know, we need people there. There were people there, but we're not having events. We're not having Uncle Dave Makin' Days and things like that. So the myth of low attendance at Cannonsburg really is a myth, in my view. Also, to Councilman Maxwell's point, you know, MTSU has a baseball team that I don't feel our community gives, like, really, you know, good support to right now. And I'd love to see, you know, us figure out a way to help MTSU sports and kind of, you know, their, their games don't have great attendance. So, I mean, as a developer, that's something I'd want to know. Like, if our college games, you know, don't really have great attendance, that would be of concern to me if I were wanting to put a double-A minor league baseball field here. And then, just one last question. I would love to know... I would love to know what the thought is on how this would solve the homelessness crisis? How bringing the ballpark? And maybe you've changed your thought on that. Maybe you, I'll let you speak to it later, but like, or if you want to speak to it now.
I can't do, I can do it after.
Okay. But I would love to just know how specifically a ballpark is going to solve the homelessness crisis without additional things coming in. But anyway, thank you all so much for listening. Really appreciate it. Thank you for caring about Cannonsburg.
Thank you, Heather.
Clarence. Mr. Clarence Santini, 2223 Medford Camber Boulevard.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Clarence Santini, paramedic, out here at Rutherford County. But this kind of hits home, Cannonsburg. I moved here in '77 from Michigan, near Detroit, not in Detroit, near Detroit. We came down here for peace and quiet and Cannonsburg really settled our hearts. Going into Cannonsburg, Cannonsburg, excuse me, is like stepping back into time. I remember riding my bicycle from Cyber Strab where I was raised at to Cannonsburg to see my grandma. She was in there selling soft drinks and ice cream back in the day, the old Westbrook General Store. Stopped by to see the blacksmith in there, who's in there, I think about every day. I love that place. Still do today. But walking around there, even in my older years, it brings back so many great memories. And for us to think that we, you know, kept up, yeah, it's been kept up quite well. Now those buildings are what, hundreds of years old? But to think this should be relocated for any reason or not kept up for any reason. I think the floors of the warehouse have been weakened. I think that's right. Or the museum, excuse me, the museum. But Cannonsburg is still used today. I was there yesterday. So many people were there, little kids, adults. It really done my heart good to see it's being used. But in closing, the homeless population in this town has grown a lot. That's true. And it's not their problem. It's not your problem. It's our problem. They're our brothers and sisters in Christ. So we need to pitch in and help out, do what we can. But Cannonsburg relocated, it's not going to change the problem because they've been sleeping on the front porch of First Baptist Church, Bank of America, all over town. So somehow or another, we need to put our hearts and minds together to take care of that problem. But Cannonsburg, she's stayed right where she is. Thank you all.
Thank you, Clarence. Clarence, thank you. Thank you for your service. All right, we need, I guess as a council, the main discussion needs to be, do we want to have further discussions and get further information? That's really what it boils down to.
I don't think there's any harm in having further discussions and getting further information.
I mean, there's not anything we're voting on. We're, you know, the honest answer is that, you know, the city manager could sign a non-binding memorandum as it stands right now without our approval. I don't think it'd be very smart for a city manager to do that. But I think the main thing for the council, do we want more information from a memorandum of understanding that really would start coming back with Cannon, the language about Cannonsburg in there and then start having the discussions. Austin and Madeline, with a lot of the questions that y'all have asked, I mean, I don't know if this will happen or not, but in my opinion, we at least need to get information. And if anything comes out of this, a lot of people are talking about Cannonsburg and a lot of people are talking about on that area. I think the thing for a lot of the people who are here, you know, we did a bottom study back in 2016, I think was the date. Is that right? 2017? To really define what was going to happen in that area of Murfreesboro and we have not had a lot of activity in that area. I think there's varying reasons for that. Heather, I think the activity from the homeless population that's down there and, you know, like I said, we're meeting, we've met with Journey Home and fully supportive of trying to work with those organizations. But, you know, Austin had sent a picture or an email to the chief the other day that, you know, the police presence and the, and I think Lisa, you had said that yesterday, that there were, while y'all were down there, that there was a firetruck and ambulance. And so look, I'm not trying to be, not be sympathetic, but I think we all have to realize that there are opportunities in that area. Will baseball solve that? No. But I think activity down in that area, and if y'all saw that, you know, the correspondence that we get from the community where we're doing our best to work on and keeping that Greenway portion of the area safe down there. So, you know, I think that's a discussion we overall have. We're not trying to, I can speak for me. I'm not trying to be callous, but I think at the same time, you know, we've dealt with that issue at Old Fort Park. We've dealt with that issue at Kids Castle. And that's something where, you know, our number one priority is making sure if you've got children, we dealt with that at McKnight Park the other night. So, I mean, that's something that we're just trying to make sure that we keep the areas where our community are congregating safe. So, and every other municipality. I mean, I look at, I look at what's happening in San Francisco and some of those other areas and, you know, I think that's why a lot of people are moving to Middle Tennessee right now, but not going to get on my soapbox on that. So we just need the council if maybe...
One thing that's positive that's happened in the last couple of weeks and input from the public is that it's shining a light on something that's needed. The light showed on it for quite a while and that's the asset and the resource that Cannonsburg is. The one thing I'd like for us as far as to, if we could, I know we have stopped booking other than a couple of events at Cannonsburg. I'd like for staff to, you know, given tasks to reconsider, I mean, start, where people can make reservations and reserve at Cannonsburg again. I don't think they've been allowed to book weddings or anything like that that goes beyond certain. But if our intent is that we're not going to affect the operation of Cannonsburg with whatever proposal goes forward, then it seems like the Cannonsburg staff ought to be allowed to make bookings.
That's something you can come back with information for us?
Yeah, I'll give you a little, I'll give you a little bit of information. The, I'm trying to remember, 2018, 2019, we talked about the need for that intersection to be addressed. The intersection there at Front Street Vine and unfortunately, the other side of Broad Street, the other small front street in there creates an intersection that's not best designed and it needs to be addressed. And so we've, we've had for a long time a plan to begin construction over there. And so the way that our road construction in conjunction with the state highway and our planning and being able to fund those and get those contracts out, there's a period of time that we have to be cautious of allowing larger events to go in there because they plan months ahead. So aligning those is very, very difficult. We've had several things come in that have been advantageous to redevelopment of that intersection that have impaired that. We had a period of time where nothing was happening when we went through the pandemic. So it forced all things, but at some point in time, temporarily, we need to say, let's stop. Because if we go into construction, you can't have events back in there. It won't be safe for either pedestrian traffic or car traffic to go back into there and have a large event. You know, weddings and things like that, that's, that might be different. And we could have a max on it. So we can, we can take a look at that. But that's the reason for the temporary halt of larger events back in Cannonsburg. We're not sure when that's going to start. We have held those off for now since, I think we had one in 2020 or 2021. That was planned months before, so we had to let those run out. So...
Y'all come back and bring us information of possibly what would be allowed and what wouldn't be allowed, what you felt like would be safe, what wouldn't be safe, but maybe bring that back to us that would just tell us and the Parks and Recreation staff, hey, here's what, what possibly could happen there.
Yeah, we're getting a little more clarity because we do have construction, the construction for Daylighting Town Creek and that park will impact the ability to get back into and use Cannonsburg. The mixed-use development across Broad Street will impact. So now we're getting clarity on some of these because we're starting to get plans on it. So we'll, we'll be able to have a little more clarity on some dates and when, when it can be used and how it can be used.
Austin?
Yeah, Craig, and this will probably be a question for Craig and Jason and the Commissioner. I get it, the city and the team will share equally in the cost of the studies on the ballpark development. Okay, that's fair. Then we go down to the financing. It says, "City will participate in the development of the ballpark by providing financing for the construction of the facility at an agreed-upon percentage of the total project cost." For the commissioner, what have you historically seen? Is that a still kind of, you know, you'll probably have to go up there, I'm sorry. But you're getting your exercise before you get on a plane back to Milwaukee.
Lucky for you and me and, hopefully me after answering this question, got delayed. So lucky for us, I'm back.
Welcome to Nashville.
Thank you.
So historically, have you typically seen kind of a 50-50 partnership between a city and an entity on a ballpark in terms of the construction or is it 100% on the city? I'm just trying to get your perspective.
Traditionally, the city has picked up the tab. There's a lease associated with it that helps defray some of that cost. There's typically, you know, there's a million ways to slice it. And you go across the country and they do it a thousand different ways because every city, state, county has different tools. TIP, you know, go to Clarksville, it's in the newspaper about what is being done there.
Did a referendum in bonds. So yeah, to your point.
Well, there's a TIP and then a bond, yeah. So there's a million ways to slice it. Traditionally speaking though, city owns the stadium or county own the stadium, they build it, the lease goes back to defray the costs associated there with. City sometimes takes, you know, and I'm not negotiating on behalf of anyone, I'm just giving you some scenarios. Five or 10 days for city use to hold a city festival or something along those lines. But I think what you're going to see is the economic impact study comes back and you're see this money that you have to contribute to a stadium, but the ripple effect, the economic ripple effect actually creates more money elsewhere. So it's up to council to look at that economic impact study and say, does this make sense for Murfreesboro?
And it's due in October to November, potentially, Craig?
For the economic impact study? Yeah, we'll have to hire a consultant and certainly work within their timeframe. So it's third party. We're not going to know exactly. I think the important thing here is though, it's, it's very difficult to talk about any type of specifics because we are starting the process. And like the commissioner said, there are lots of ways to do this and every state, every city has different tools to do it. So it's very hard to go in and take agreements and how it was done in one place and replace here. It may not be legal for us to even do something like that, or we may not have that tool. But we may have additional tools.
The other part that's important, which I'm interested in getting information, is on the Sports Authority. Because, you know, right now at nine and three quarters percent, we only get a quarter of the tax revenue that comes back. Half goes to the state, another quarter goes to the county and we only get a quarter. But under the Sports Authority, the way the state provision works with a few minor tweaks, which Clarksville is already going through, we would get all of that. We would get nine and three quarters that would come back. The Sports Authority would. So in right, so in other words, we would get 70, 75% more of the tax revenue than what we're getting right, you know, getting right now.
On-site sales, yeah.
On-site sales. Yeah. So lots of, I guess the question is, and I'm not trying to push this along, but I guess I am trying to push this along. Do we want to have more financial discussions to understand those processes, knowing they have, anything that they're going to spend money on? So if, if the engine, any of that has got to come back to us to vote on.
Well, to the point on the Sports Authorities, it says to finance, own, and oversee. So if the Sports Authority is financing it, is that through private investors?
Municipal bonds.
Or is it on us?
Municipal bonds.
Yeah, well, it'd be revenue from that point, not...
If it's the Sports Authority, it could be a revenue bond, you know, and it could have some city backing or, you know, depending on what the bond market is at that given time, whether it needs it or not, do credit enhancement. There's lots of different ways to cut it out.
I don't want us to get too far down the road because I think the council, the big concern with the council is financing. If we can get an economic impact study as soon as possible and then come back to the table and talk about financing, that's really going to be key. Because we can talk about this all we want. So we know how the financing's going to be.
I agree. We have to take that next step in the memorandum to say, yeah, we're okay. Or, I mean, again, he could sign it. I don't think he wants to sign that without our saying we'd like to get more information.
I mean, simplistically, we're driving past the car lot and the question that you turn to your spouse and say, do you want to stop and look at a car? I mean, that's the point we're at. You know, we're not talking about how to finance the car or how to do the car or anything else. You know, do you want us to stop and pull in there and say, let's take a look at it? That's where we're at.
Because the memorandum of understanding, since it is non-binding, all of the things that are in there, I don't want to say this, they're not worth, they're very general and vague because they're designed to be that way.
Very high level. Very high level.
Anything that we would get moving forward would have to have more detailed information for us to even consider it. And I do agree. There's, I mean, I've watched the discussion on the Titan Stadium in Nashville, Bridgestone. I mean, there's going to have to be a lot of discussion on the financing side before we ever move, move forward. And we're not going to be able to get that. I mean, it may come back, the economic study, it'd be a great opportunity for the entire downtown area, but we don't know that yet.
To use an analogy that just came to me, and I probably should never say this because it'll fall short again, too much reflecting on my high school years. We're basically saying, you want to dance? And, and we're not asking to, we're not going to marry him. We're not sold out this project. We're just trying to say, what are the numbers? And the numbers should lead us to the right path forward.
I agree.
If we get the numbers, then we should be able to make the right decision going forward. And just realize that there's, you know, a whole lot of steps between we've got to dance and get married. So, I mean, that's kind of where we are right now.
Jason, I got a question for you. Sorry. I know you were comfortable. So we've been talking about Cannonsburg. Are you open to other sites downtown such as, I know we have our city street department and the convenience center. Not ideal because it's not on Highway 41, but still it's a downtown facility. It would require us to move it as a city. Maybe we move it over to Wasteaway. But are you open to other locations downtown? I guess that's the question for you.
Short answer is yes, but I think there's preferences. Having walked, having walked the multiple options, there's something charming. And again, the predicate on Cannonsburg is that it has to be symbiotic, work together, be a beautiful connection. Assuming that, that's, that would be a clear preference. But the site that you referenced, yeah. I mean, I think that's absolutely worth looking at. It could be better for any number of different reasons. You know, we walked it just this morning, today. And there's little things in real estate that might get in the way, like you got to walk back uphill to get to the square. You know, does that end up being dismissive to people attending baseball games down? I don't know all those things. But beyond economic impact, the one thing that I think is, is important to the equation on the due diligence, as people have said, is architecture and engineering. There's a lot of floodplain issues on all three of them. And we need to understand what those challenges are. That alone could end it. If someone goes, it's just too expensive to do. Okay, then it's too expensive to do. And then architecturally, on a Cannonsburg question, it's how, how could that work? What would it even look like? It doesn't need to be expensive. It's just some preliminary sketches and thoughts of here's how it could work together. I think that's very instructive to the discussion too. So I think it's economic impact for us as well. We got to continue to do our due diligence. And then, and then the engineering and the architecture. I think those are the three things. I don't think just economics alone, because I don't think it's a foregone conclusion that engineering and architecture will come back and say, hey, it works perfect.
Last question. On your LLC, it's got two members. So I'm assuming you're one of those members. Is the other one Mr. Waltrip as the L O I?
No, 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 no. He, that was a letter of interest from him. We're in the process. I've had preliminary discussions on ownership with, like I said, that would be a combination of national resource familiarity with such projects, as well as we'd want to have a very strong local involvement from individuals here. strong local involvement from individuals here.
Okay. You're not going to name it McFarland Field or anything like that?
What's that?
You're not going to name it McFarland Field.
Maxwell Field was quite a name, yeah.
You just gave more social media fodder. It'd be out there now.
I'm sorry, Shane, I couldn't resist.
Hey, for what it's worth, my one-year-old baby pictures with my boys were at Cannonsburg. So Bill, I saw those last night. Do y'all want to continue the discussion and at least give staff? Look, the council, I'm not going to be sitting in on these discussions. So full disclosure, I don't think that's my part. So it would be staff coming back and bringing information to us. And that's really the question, is that, there's not really an actionable item, but...
Who is staff? I know we throw that one... I hate to say it like that. Is it just Craig or is it 10 other people?
There's a lot of, if you're part of the city staff, so there's...
Staff, I've always wondered that.
Everybody except you.
That's fine.
Hey, I always laugh when people email me and say, you know, your mayor administration, can y'all get together? And I'm like, well, who's the administration? I mean, it's just me, I don't have any... So we're just situated differently, but, you know, so for those in the audience, there's really only four people that truly answer to the city council. That's the city manager, the city attorney, the city recorder, and the city judge. Everyone else under the city manager form of government works, or the council manager form of government directly works for the city manager. The good thing about that, politics don't even involve in service delivery. So in other words, I'm not calling, you know, the director of Solidway saying, my sister's brother's cousin is applying for a job. That's just not how it works. So when we talk about staff meeting, they do the meeting, their job is to meet, get information, and then bring that back to us. That's, you wouldn't want us managing your day-to-day operations on your Solidway services. That's why there's professionals who do that. So that's Austin. It could be Sam, Greg, engineering. It could be Road Network. I mean, I would assume Craig brings in a lot of different people. In this case, Parks and Recreation, I think, would be brought in to discuss on Cannonsburg. So it would be a very diverse group of people who are having the discussion. Does anybody, let me put it this way, does anybody have an objection with at least having the discussions moving forward to see if it is reality? Can be reality. All right. Craig, you have your, looks like you have your answer.
All right. Folks, I'm going to give like a quick five-minute break. Y'all are welcome to stay and listen to us talk about construction contract for transit facility, but my guess is you probably don't care about that. So let's do a quick, let's try to make our five-minute break 10 minutes so we actually come back quickly.
All right. We're going to head, call back to order. We have, we'll move to action. Items, Resolution 23 R 29, depositories of City Funds.
Yep. Staff performed an extensive review of proposals that were submitted and determined Pinnacle Bank, Wilson Bank, and Trust, and Truist Bank would best serve the city's needs. This resolution is approval of, the city council approves the selected banks as depositories of the funds of the city and authorizes the mayor, the city recorder, and the city attorney to execute necessary agreements and anything related to the provision of banking services for the city.
I think it's a beautiful thing, so moved.
Second.
First, just a second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move into C I P transfers.
This is our usual transfer that we present every month. It's, no action is required. It actually should be down under the workshop items.
All right.
Information purposes?
Construction contract for the Transit Center facilities. Mr. Kerr? Who's handling that, or Scott handling that? See, Scott?
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. I'm here on behalf of city staff to seek approval for the construction agreement.
Hey, Austin.
Contract.
He's part of staff.
You're Austin. Another member of staff.
Make a note, make a note.
Just Craig.
Sorry, Scott.
Oh, you're fine.
All meeting.
I'm here for the Transit City of...
Left Sisso.
The contract, construction agreement contract for the planned Transit Center facility with Rock City Construction. The new transit facility is located at 324 New Salem Highway. It will provide a centralized location for transit operations. This project includes an administration building, a transit pavilion, and a light maintenance building. The construction time of completion for the project is 540 days. Rock City Construction submitted the lowest responsible bid in the amount of $17,145,843. Staff is requesting an additional $700,000 for owner contingency. The contingency funding will be used for unforeseen items that may be encountered and administered by field change directives and change orders. These changes will be approved by city staff along with recommendations and approvals from H D R Engineering. The project total construction budget is $17,845,843. Council priority served, expand infrastructure. The fiscal impact, the construction cost is budgeted in multiple federal and state grants, including local funds. The funding split is $5.2 million federal, $9.6 million state, and $2.9 million from fiscal year '21 C I P budget. I can answer any questions at this time.
I can't wait to see it.
It's been a long time coming.
It'll be nice, it'll be nice.
One quick question. Full disclosure, I had been contacted by one of the other construction companies. Do we feel pretty confident that there's a $2 million difference in bids? And typically, you don't see that large of a disparity? I mean, look, if Rock City feels like they, that's the low bid, I mean, that's a great deal for the city. But that's a pretty big variance when you're looking at a, you know, a 10 to 15% difference between bids. Do we feel pretty confident that they'll perform at that amount?
It looks like saying construction was the second lowest responsible bidder, and they were about, not quite a million dollars higher on the administration building. And it looks like they were a little bit higher on a couple other items, but the administration building was the biggest cost there that Rock City was lower on.
Was it because of the materials they're going to use or made that discrepancy? Or was it because of...
Well, most of the time, the architects are specifying the exact materials you have to use, so it's pretty detailed. It's just, it's 2.2 million, which, that's a, and that's a pretty big number, but...
And some of it was in the site work, too, just some of the construction costs of the detention pond and some of the stormwater portions of the project.
Instead of the proposal that we've had some experience with Rock City, what are the other projects at Rock City?
Rock City did a bathroom renovation project at the police department about eight months ago and did a really good job for us. They also did a ADA project for the front of the sportscom, a concrete project and sidewalk project there.
Substantially smaller project.
That's just smaller projects. The biggest project that I'm aware of that they've done in Rutherford County, they've been working for some of the county administrative buildings. I'm not sure exactly what the name of those projects were, but I know they were in the millions of dollars in those projects.
I mean, H D R says the Rock City bid's within 17% of the 2022 estimated cost, so I get what you're saying. If it's, you know, a $2 million variance, Shane, that is sizable, but I'm going to trust that H D R says this is what it should be, and they're within 17%.
So that works great. We'll just be, so city staff will be really looking to make sure that there's not a bunch of change orders coming through.
I was just going to say, make sure you pass the message on to Rock City. Change orders, no.
We have a motion for approval? Madam?
I do. I make a motion.
Motion.
Second.
First, just a second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to Transit Center Supplement Request Number Two.
Yes, I'm here again on behalf of city staff to request the approval of Supplement Number Two for construction administration with H D R Engineering Incorporated. On April 13th, 2018, the city entered into a professional service agreement for the design of a planned transit facility center, which included construction administration services to be scoped at a later date under a supplemental agreement. Supplemental Request Number Two adds construction services to the original contract. These services are retained on a larger-scale projects to assist the city staff with administrative duties associated with the construction of the project to comply with state and federal requirements. The estimated cost for professional services is $1,245,705. Council priority served is expand infrastructure, the fiscal impact. The expenses funded by 80% federal funds, 10% state funds, and 10% local in the amount of $124,571, which is funded by the fiscal year '21 C I P budget. Can take any questions at this time.
No questions from me, so moved.
Second.
First, just a second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Thank you, Scott. Anyone have questions for Aaron on the July dashboard?
You do a great job on that.
You do a great job, and you're very thorough in your answers to my questions, so thank you.
Hey, Austin, she's part of city staff, too.
Part of city staff. On staff! I thought it was just Craig.
About 11. Get some T-shirts, they have 1100. T-shirts.
You have a large administration there, Shane.
Any board, we don't have any board and commission appointments. Okay? Any licensing?
No, sir.
Okay? Any statements to be paid?
Not today.
Any other business from staff? Golly, that's going to, from now on, Austin, that's...
Is that, that's my moment, huh? Okay. I had her moment, I have my moment now, okay.
I've been talking to staff, Austin, about the possibility of putting a G D O-type overlay over Church Street, going maybe half a mile to a mile in each direction from the interstate, and off of Medical Center, going on Broad Street on either direction. What is the idea from the rest of the council about having staff to look at some of that possibility?
Repeat that again, please.
Putting a G D O-type overlay on Church Street in either direction of the interstate and on Broad Street on either direction of Medical Center, coming back towards downtown especially.
Can we put it on our retreat agenda?
Individual learners.
We're talking about more blue signs, are we?
Wayfinding signs. Would that be the G D O, the same G D O that is on the east side of Thompson, I mean, east side of Broad Street?
Most applicable would be the G D O for the east side of Broad Street. That's where we'd have top of the line.
G D O for.
Would be worthy of some discussion of modification based on what we know about how that has worked in the past.
Yep. Hey, Austin, Sam, he's part of staff, too.
Since we're talking about stuff for staff, I'd like to ask the staff, since it's more than one, it's not just Craig, would it be possible to look at, in all seriousness, for our city schools where we have room for potential ballfields? I know, Shane, that's near and dear to your heart. We're looking at ballfields out on the west side, but we still have large parcels of land that, I'll use Black Fox Elementary as an example, where you can put in maybe one ballfield, at least one is better than none, and that starts to address the shortage we have. So I would appreciate, I guess, staff, your staff, Craig.
No, I'll just do it myself.
So, Austin, I had that, I was driving by Siegel Elementary the other day, and there's one huge backstop on the front side of the property, and there's one huge backstop on the back. Something that would be part of that conversation with the school board, like our baseball team rents from Bradyville, out at Bradyville Elementary, and then their, their club maintains the field, but then gets the rental income. So maybe there's a way, talking with Trey, that you, there's a certain process that you have to work with each individual school to lease those fields. But then they also get to keep the income for leasing it out. So, I mean, it would not take long if you opened up those fields for practices in the afternoon that either Murphysboro Little League or, you know, people could use those.
The challenge has been that E S P programs are operating and using those fields during the daylight hours sometimes as well, and so coordinating that where, you know, you don't, you know...
I've already talked to Dr. Duke, and he said E S P wasn't a concern, and he was happy to activate those fields for Parks and Rec for usage.
Really? Because E S P runs till six.
He said it was not a problem.
Maybe, Craig, if y'all come back, maybe do an inventory of the fields that we have that are not being used. I mean, some of them, like Siegel, you couldn't, you could use to maybe take batting practice, you couldn't use for, you know, you'd take a lot of money to get them ready, but...
We used to use them, by the way. We used to use them for practice fields, yeah, we used to use the school fields from there.
We had one at Bellwood, but it's got a walking track around it now. So we've got this, parcels of land, if we get three or four out of it, that's three or four, it's better than zero, so.
Play catch-up on ballfields real quick.
Yeah. Any other business from council? Hey, I'm going to make one comment, and this really is not just to council, it's to all of our city team. I was laying in bed this morning, and the first thing I thought when I woke up was economic impact of a baseball team. I'm going through my mind, like, okay, trying to figure out dollars. But then at the same time, you know, you get weary of controversy and different tough issues and still thinking back of, you know, we had the good decision that came on Friday with the landfill. But at the same time, there are all these decisions that we've had to make that are really tough decisions. And so I just want to say thank y'all today, handling a meeting with grace and listening to what people have to say, and then also for our team on the way y'all handle things, because no one likes getting complaints, but that's our job, and sometimes you get weary of that. But thank y'all for your hard work. Today was a good meeting, listening to everybody.
Tomorrow night is Main Street's last concert. Welcome to come downtown, 6:30. It's the last concert of the season, so come on downtown.
Are you performing, Bill?
Yeah, I'll be performing. No, you don't want me performing, there wouldn't be anybody showing up.
Staff performing.
The staff will be there.
Land host and such, all right.
I think everybody has their invite for, there will be no deliberation, but I think we have the meeting, is it, does everyone have that, the lunch meeting with M T S U?
Set 27, by the way.
Dr. Mcfee called me day before yesterday and wanted to relay to everyone that, that there's no agenda, they just want to get to talk to everyone. Greg, I did ask him that. I felt confident that some members of the council, mainly one that I know of, me, would ask a question about excess properties around M T S U and how those are being used, and he assured me that they would have a response for that.
That one downtown behind Central, that's the one I'm curious about.
What is that date? Make sure I have it on my calendar.
Was it 27th?
27th.
11:30, you're right. I got it.
And I was supposed to bring something, and I left them in my other thing at, at the office. The state of the schools that Trey is doing at Doubletree, I think. Does anybody have that on their calendar?
It's not on my calendar.
I don't know about that.
I will get it to you. It's an invitation. I'll, I'll send it on our chain.
When is it?
Are we invited?
Yeah, yes.
When is it?
In fact, that's what I'm going to have to find out. I don't, I don't see it on...
Invitation show.
I had little invitations that I'd asked Lisa to give me, and then I left them in my other things.
Can you get staff to send it out?